Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees are now convened in a boardwork session on Thursday, June 9th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom at Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center. Let's try this. Still nothing.
We have a technical problem? Check, check, check. Yep.
Either that or I'm going to have to hire a talker for me. I have volunteers up here. Well, while they're working out technical difficulties, I'm going to go ahead and go through the boilerplate. I'll start at the beginning. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees are now convened in a boardwork session on Thursday, June 9th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom at the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, June 13th, 2022 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience members may not participate in the meeting outside the designated agenda items for citizen participation or public comment. Disruption of the meeting by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the board president or the board's counsel as meeting parliamentarian. Continued or repeated disruption of any board meeting by words or actions may result in removal or loss of the privilege to attend the meeting. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. They will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cellphones, like mine, are now turned off or in silent mode. We thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are here in attendance this evening. And we have one, that being Ryan Irving. Ryan, where are you? Thank you for attending. We also have Boy Scouts in attendance. We have Robbie Seos at troop number 277. Thank you for being here. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision and mission statement, board comments, and citizen participation portions of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, June 13th, 2022. The next portion of the board meeting are public comments. However, we have no board comments, public comments rather, that have been identified as being on recognitions. So we're going to go ahead and proceed with the recognitions portion of tonight's agenda, and we will pick up the public comments immediately thereafter. Now it cut in. Okay. I heard that. No, sir. I'm not going to start over again. We will now proceed with Agenda Items 4B and 4C under the recognitions portion of the agenda. Agenda Items 4A and 4D under recognitions will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, June 13th, 2022. The board will recognize CFISD athletes earning a state medal at the UIL State Track Meet. We will recognize these athletes first, and then we will show a video featuring Eugene Liger's "The Third Story" following his UIL State Championship. The presenter, Charles Ament. And before you start, Coach, we have a number of recognitions, so I'm going to ask my board members to step down, and we'll start at my far right, so Scott Henry, if you will stop down, step down rather, and help in the recognition process.
Mr. Jackson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry, it is my pleasure to be here tonight representing our athletic department to present two athletes from Si Woods and Si Falls that finished as a state champion and state runner-up at the UIL State Track Meet in Austin on Saturday, May 14th. We truly appreciate the time you've afforded us to publicly recognize the highly deserving athletes. In the execution of our program, our athletic department is focused on three core areas: competitive excellence in UIL competition, academic excellence through athletic participation, and service to our wonderful community. The two honorees tonight exemplify the three ideas of our program, and truly an honor to be able to publicly recognize them for their high level of achievement. There are many people that say that the State Track Meet is one of the greatest collections of athletes in the entire country over the course of three days. To be able to qualify for that in the state of Texas is a remarkable feat in itself. And to have two people from our district that not only went there to compete but also excel is just absolutely exemplary. In order to be able to advance to the state, they have to advance out of the district track meet, they have to advance out of the area track meet, and they have to advance out of the regional track meet, just simply to compete. And I would encourage any of you, if you have never been to the state track meet, it is actually one of the best things that happens in the state of Texas. It is an awesome three-day event of all classifications, and on the day that they competed, they were 6A, and they also competed the 1A state championship. So you see a wide variety of athletes all across, from small towns to huge metroplex, and it was incredible to see. I'll just go ahead and ask Zaire and Eugene to go ahead and step forward, and I'll tell just a little bit about their stories. Zaire, yeah, go ahead, and y'all can stand right there. Like, to see these two run and to run not only fast but over hurdles is unbelievable, right? And not only do they make it look easy, and that's one of the things in athletics, you see people that do it at such a high level, they make it look easy, and you realize how hard it really is. And Zaire, a little unique story about Zaire in the regional competition. Zaire won the district title, she won the area title, and it was the, as I began to recognize who this person was, as you can see, she's not very tall in stature. Hurdlers tend to be a little bit taller and longer limbs and get it over, you know, you do the math on the hurdles, and you're like, who is this? And all of a sudden, boom, she's winning, right? And it was like that in the district meet, it was like that in the area meet, and at the regionals, the South Dallas area, Duncanville, DeSoto, Klein Forest, it is among the best in regard to speed. And so you're like, well, let's check. And so Zaire lines up, everybody, you're like, she's the smallest, right? But one of the things about being an associate athletic director is you get to see them multiple times, and just like, it's incredible how efficient she is over the hurdles, and just was, and my favorite moment, and I told her earlier, my favorite moment was in that moment at the regionals where she won, and she won by a hundredth of a second. And if you've never been to a meet, the meet is, what happens is, especially in the speed races, it's so fast, everyone immediately turns to the board to see like, who wins? The technology is amazing. And so everybody, we knew it was close, and they exited the track, they started walking towards it, and all of a sudden, it goes up, and do you want to do the dance and the jump? But I mean, not only is she fast, but when she realized she qualified for state, she jumped incredibly high as well. And it was awesome. It was awesome because of all the things that you see and you know how hard the hard work is. She qualified and state runner-up, finished with a time of 1361, and beat one of her really good friends from Si Ridge High School, Riley Hampton, that finished third, who's a sophomore, and hopefully we'll be recognizing her as well, but incredible. And she's headed to UTA, right? University of Texas at Arlington. Also in attendance is Coach Trampus Goodwin, who has put in a lot of time, campus athletic coordinator, Chris Brister, principal Becky Denton, and most importantly, her mom. Go ahead, mom, stand up, stand up, stand up. The next story, Eugene Liger, is one of, so he advances out of district, right? Advances out of area. We had another hurdler at Langham Creek that was fantastic as well. So the two had battled all year, and it was, the races were fantastic all throughout the year. And in track, it falls under prom season. So prom falls on Friday, when he has to run, kind of went back and forth, right, of whether to go, decides to run, and there's a false start, there was in it, and he thought he had done it. So if you know anything about that, you would have been, he would have been done at that time. They don't let you continue if you false start. He put his hand on his chest, he was like, oh no, they ended up restarting it, right? So he qualifies for the finals, and in the finals, he actually finishes third, and the top two advance. But they have a wild card among the district, so basically nine, the best of the top two from the four regions, time is advanced. And so he qualifies as the wild card into the state, right? Again, gets lane two, which is a favorable thing because he can see everything that takes place. One of the other athletes that we had from Langham Creek was well out in advance, same thing happens, he falls actually, and there's this like, a little bit of uncertainty as to what happened, and very much like with Zaire, we turn to the board of like, who want? And lo and behold, Eugene is our state champion. Over the course of the track season, Eugene won four times. I think he and Alex battled back and forth several times. He'd been to the state meet last year, right, with the four-by-four? Is that correct? Right? And so he'd been there and ran a time of 3657. He's headed to Angelo State to play football, right? And actually, kind of redid his schedule so that he was actually scheduled to be at orientation, but he wanted to be here with his incredible family. Y'all go ahead and stand up. He's coached by Tyrone Carter, who is the head coach, who wasn't able to be here, but assisted by Coach Brown. Go ahead and stand up. To be where they are, they make it look incredibly easy, but it is not. And we're so thankful for all that you guys contributed, all the hard work, and very deserving of all of the recognition that you guys have. And to the board, we appreciate the time of being able to tell the story of these two athletes.
what three of your guiding principles are for all your athletes?
Guiding principles, number one is athletic excellence, right? Number two, academic excellence. And then number three, community service. Those are the pillars by which we try to operate within our program, and those are kind of our guiding forces in regard to how we try to make decisions and collect data on all the things that we do. That, you know, Dr. Henry said one time, when we were 10 teams in a district, you know, on a Friday night, five were going to win and five were going to lose. And so obviously, we always want to, we would like everyone to be able to win a state title. But we also know that, at the end of the day, when they walk away, that they've had a great experience, and they've learned through competition, the work ethic through academic excellence, which is hard and is rigorous in our district, and then also to be able to give back in the community service.
Thank you ever so much, sir. The board will now recognize new principals and administrators. Before turning the floor over to Roy Garcia, Dr. Linda Macias will announce the new director for the Carlton Center, and Bill Powell, who will retire at the end of this month, will introduce his replacement as the new Assistant Superintendent of Support Services. So you would be next.
Thank you. Good evening.
Linda, you've been talking too much today anyway. Can we go ahead and roll the video?
Winning state in the 300-meter hurdles for Cypress Woods High School was one of the greatest accomplishments I've had in life. I wasn't planning on running hurdles at all. You know, my coaches, they was, you know, encouraging me to run hurdles, and they really believed, you know, that I could go far.
You could see in the event that he succeeded in, 300 hurdles are one of the hardest races in all of track and field, and he goes out and he attacks it, and he'll tell you that he's successful because he's fast and because he runs with great technique and all of that, but the fact of the matter is, he's successful in that race because he has a heart of a lion.
Really, senior year, I was more focused on football than track, so I was, you know, doing my thing in football. I ended up getting my football scholarship. A lot of things that happened this year in my life, but I definitely will say that God helped me get through those times, and the people around me helped get me through those times, because, I'll just say it, my dad was murdered at the beginning of this year. You know, at the same time, when my dad, you know, was murdered, my mom had stage four breast cancer, you know, so it was two big things happening at once, and sometimes, you know, she would be in so much pain, she didn't even know if she was going to wake up in the morning.
He really had to take care of me the entire summer. I got to a point to where I could not walk. He was just, he waited on me hand and foot. He brought me my food, he drove me everywhere, he prayed with me every night, I could hear him sometimes praying in his own room for me, but, you know, he didn't miss practice. He didn't miss a game. He was able to stay very positive. He had a lot of strength here, as well as with his church family, but he spends most of his time at school. So to have such a community of support around him meant so much, and I'm so grateful for that.
She's making like a full recovery now, so, you know, it's looking really good.
Just to revel and marvel in this accomplishment, both with football and with track, has just been amazing to watch.
That extra degree of effort on the track or on the football field, that extra degree of effort that he puts into the classroom, and really that extra degree of just selflessness in the time that he spends pouring out his heart for other people makes all the difference in the world.
If you really actually think about it, you know, going the extra degree is actually not even just a school thing, but a life thing, even, you know, for working, your job, and growing up, you know, if you go the extra degree, you can't help but be successful, you know, so I definitely attribute that to my life, and I feel like everybody should
And to my athletes and the families, if you want to stay, you're welcome to do so. The next segment can take up to 30 minutes, so if you want to leave now, that's okay, but if you want to stay, you're welcome to do so.
Mr. Jackson, I think I need to go with him and help out.
So now we're back to Item 4C. The first presenter is going to be Dr. Linda Macias, who will then be followed by Bill Powell, who will then be followed by Roy Garcia. Linda.
Good evening, President Jackson, board members, and Dr. Henry. I am honored to introduce the new director for the Dorothy Carlton Center, Dennis Watkins. So Dennis, stand up. Dennis received his bachelor's and master's degree from Prairie View A&amp;M University, and he is currently pursuing his doctorate in educational leadership in the area of mental health and mental services at Houston Baptist University. Now Dennis actually began his education career 13 years ago as a life skills teacher at the Carlton Center. He served as a counselor and an assistant principal at Arnold Middle School, and then went on to serve for four years as an assistant principal at Cypress Creek High School, and most recently, he has been serving as a director for student services. Dennis has always had a heart for serving students with special needs. Even as he moved on to serve as an administrator at different campuses, every year, every summer, he made his way back to the Carlton Center to support our ESY programs at that campus. So I was not surprised when Dennis shared with me that this opportunity was his dream job. So I present to you Dennis Watkins, our new leader for the Dorothy Carlton Center.
President Tom Jackson, Board of Trustees, and our Superintendent Dr. Mark Henry, good afternoon, and with such gratitude to take on this new leadership opportunity. I must first give thanks to my Lord and Savior, because without Him I would not be here, and this would not take place. Next to my phenomenal and superhero of a wife, Ebony, and our beautiful one-year-old daughter Ava, they're at home right now, friends and family are gathered, having a watch party. Hey, you all. See you all when I get home. But truly, words can't describe how enthused and excited I am to partner with the community and to pour into what I like to say, one of the most amazing student populations we serve in education. And it truly is, selfishly speaking, a dream job for me. And tonight, I have the pleasure of actually having who I still call my principal, Ms. Rhonda Terrence. And I just want to publicly thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. I appreciate you. Giving me that opportunity and taking that chance on a college student from Prairie View A&amp;M. Thank you. To my mentors far and near, and my Cy Fair family, and I'll try not to make eye contact, but there's so many of y'all in here who've had an impact on my personal life as well as my professional, and I thank you. Please continue to be a bridge builder that you all are. Thank you for taking the time to invest in me and believe in me each day. You all deserve to take a bow.
Bill Powell.
President Tom Jackson, board members, Superintendent Dr. Henry.
Just before you start, I hope we have no more than onesie or twosie weeks with you here. Is that accurate?
Twosie, about twosie. Before we get to Darren, I just want to say what an honor and privilege it's been for me to serve in public education for 33 years. The last 20 here in Cy Fair with the most incredible people. I'll truly miss my Cy Fair family as I travel and begin the next chapter of my life, but for me to be able to announce not only one of my team members, but one of my friends as my replacement truly is a blessing and an honor. Mr. Darren Crawford is in his 14th year in Cy Fair ISD, having served as the Director of Nutrition Services, the Assistant Director of Human Resources for Nutrition Services, and the Accountant for Nutrition Services. Before joining Cy Fair ISD, Darren spent 17 years as an accountant and controller in the hospitality industry. Darren knew I'd have a tough time tonight, so when I asked him if there's anything special he'd like for me to share, in his introduction, he asked that I mention his quick wit, devastating good looks, effusive charm, and inspiring leadership. Now, three of those may be hard to believe, but the fourth one, the fourth one is not hard to believe. Having worked with Darren so closely, the Monday when we shut down for COVID, his team, Nutrition Services team, and him that weekend putting together food so that we could serve millions of meals to our community and our students because he said, we got to feed our kids. He truly is an inspiring leader, and I'm proud to announce Mr. Darren Crawford, our new Assistant Superintendent for Support Services.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I do want to echo some of the things Bill has said. First, though, let me do some introductions because I'll forget, I'm really bad at that. So let me first introduce my wife of 31 years, Kristi. She is not only my wife, the mother of my two kids, who couldn't be here because one of them is working on her master's degree, one of them is still working on his freshman 15, although he's in his third year. He's going to get those credits, they're both at LSU. Go Tigers! I'm contractually obligated to say that. to say that. So, go Tigers! But I do want to say, I have had the pleasure the last 10 years of working in my dream job as the Nutrition Services Director, and Bill is making me cry, so blame him if I have tears. But it has been awesome, it has been a great ride, so many amazing people that I've worked with, both in that department and around the district. Lots of people in this district have been mentors to me and have helped me be better at what I do, have taught me to just not lead with my head, but to lead with my heart. And I think that is the biggest difference that Cyfair has made in me, and I hope to carry that on to my new team, because I know, you know, it's a bigger team. It's a great job to have, because if you look at the title of the job, it starts with assist, that's what you do. Right in the middle, you have support, that's what you do, and then we finish off with service, which is what we do. Two of the directors in that department are here tonight, and I want to recognize them because they're both amazing people who lead great teams, and like Mr. Powell said, we're fortunate that we get to work with our friends. Dr. Kane Smith, he is our Director of Transportation. It is the finest transportation department in the nation. We transport so many kids, and he does it, and it looks like it's easy, so I'll be more than happy to take credit for that later. Suzie Hunter, who's our Director of Nutrition Services, again, I believe that to be the finest program in the country, not just because I used to run it, but because of the team that ran it. It was not me, and it was exciting for me to name, you know, one of my friends as the replacement. So, thank y'all. President Jackson, board members, Dr. Henry, administration, thank y'all for putting the faith in me. We will continue to take care of our kids, because that is what we do, that's what that department has always done, and it'll continue. So, thank y'all.
And now we turn to Roy Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. As you know, board of trustees, we see amazing leaders already. Congratulations, Dennis and Darren, just unbelievable leadership, and I like what they said, it's all about serving, and that's what we do. And I'm happy to introduce a few more principals to you. It's one of those situations that when you have six principals that retire, you may lose a lot of that wisdom and experience, but so proud of the pipeline, the leadership that we have, and the work that is done by our phenomenal principals each and every day to grow those leaders. So I'm happy to introduce a few new principals to you this evening. We will begin with our new principal for Lampkin Elementary School. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Jill Brister. Jill earned her Bachelor of Science in Early Childhood Education from Texas Christian University and her Master of Educational Leadership from Texas A&amp;M University. You're going to hear that a few times tonight, so just go ahead and let you know that. She participated in the Deloitte University Principal Leadership Program, the Aspiring Principal Institute, has served as a mentor for new assistant principals, and is currently serving on the Teacher Incentive Allotment Advisory Council. Jill has 24 years of experience in education, serving as a teacher at Bang Elementary for six years. She was an administrator at Wesley Academy in Houston, and in 2004, she was selected as an instructional specialist at Lampkin Elementary. She has served as the Assistant Principal at Lampkin for the past nine years. As a student, Jill attended K-12 and CFISD at Millsap, Arnold, and Cyfair High School. Jill enjoys reading, traveling, and spending time at the family lake house in the Texas Hill Country. Can't wait for that first invitation for our retreat. I am happy to introduce our new principal for Lampkin Elementary School, Ms. Jill Brister.
Thank you so much, President Jackson, board of trustees, and Dr. Henry. Thank you for this tremendous honor. I, like Roy Garcia said, grew up in Cyfair, didn't get very far. I went to Millsap, Arnold, and Cyfair High School, and now serving at Lampkin, been there for 18 years, and I look forward to carrying on the traditions that we have at Lampkin and the excellence and the true heart for kids that we have there. I'd like to introduce my family. My biggest supporters are my parents. My mom actually taught at Dean Middle School back in the 70s, so we're a family of educators. My brother Chris is the campus athletic coordinator at Cy Falls High School. My sister-in-law Stacy is an eighth-grade science teacher at Spillane Middle School. And my two loves of my life, my nieces, Riley is here tonight, she just recently graduated from Bridgeland and is headed to College Station, and my other niece who couldn't make it because she has her first big girl job, she is on her way back from Dallas from an internship, and she graduated from Cy Ranch. So they are my biggest supporters and my cheerleaders. And then also, I have a great group of people over here, lifelong friends, teachers that taught with when we first started out, and then Gail Parker. I have to attribute my success as a leader to her. There is not a better servant leader to learn from than Gail. And so, Gail, I will do everything I can to make you proud and carry on the traditions and the culture that we have at Lampkin, and looking forward to having you come visit. And I just appreciate this honor, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jill. Our next principal we'd like to introduce is our new principal for Arnold Middle School, Ms. Ambie Clinkscale. Ambie received her Bachelor of Science in Kinesiology from Texas A&amp;M University and her Master of Educational Leadership from Sam Houston State University. She participated in the Aspiring Administrator Institute and the Aspiring Principal Institute. She has 26 years of experience serving as a teacher and coach in Splendora in Port Natures Grove ISD before joining Cypress Fairbanks in 2002. She was a teacher and coach at Cyfair High School, a teacher at Smith Middle School and Cypress Ranch High School, and she served as Assistant Principal at Arnold Middle School and Cypress Creek High School. She has served as the Associate Principal at Cypress Creek for the past five and a half years. Ambie and her husband Brad, who is a teacher and coach at Cyfair High School, both received their 20-year pins this year. They have one child, Brayden, who will be a freshman at Cyfair High School. Ambie enjoys spending time in her backyard around the pool, another retreat opportunity, camping with her family, and traveling around Texas in her RV. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Ambie Clinkscale.
President Jackson, board of trustees, Dr. Henry, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm both humbled and honored to be named as the new principal at Arnold Middle School. I'm very excited to be returning home to my Arnold family, there's some of them here tonight, which I really appreciate. I'm so excited to serve the community, the staff, the students at Arnold, and continue the rich tradition of successes and what brings true meaning to the motto, there's no place like Arnold. I would not be here today. There's several people that I need to thank. First and foremost, I'm going to thank Vicky Snookhaus for being my mentor and taking a chance on me so many years ago and giving me opportunity to become an administrator. She also put up with me when I was a young buck back at Cyfair, we had some good times going to those state tournaments together, so she was right there along for that ride. Also want to thank my parents, who are both retired educators, Mike and Debbie Heckathorne. They have raised four children who have all continued in their footsteps as educators. My older sister was just named as the principal in NSISD. My younger sister is Director of Special Education, and my brother is a teacher and assistant football coach at Tomball High School. So needless to say, we had great role models to look up to growing up, they raised us in the right way. I also want to thank my husband, Brad, for putting up with me for the past 20 years. We just celebrated our 17th anniversary, we actually met in the district my first year at Cyfair High School when he was teaching at Farnie. So we have called Cyfair our home for the past 20 years, and we're glad to be raising our son Brayden in such a great district, the best in the state. I think we're most excited that we're all three going to be together next year right next door to each other, my two bobcats, and I get to be the Buccaneer cheering them on on the sidelines. So again, I'm just honored for this opportunity, and look forward to continuing serving the district.
Next is an introduction for our new principal for Kayla Middle School, Joshua Carroll. Josh earned his Bachelor of Science in Education from Texas A&amp;M University and his Master of Educational Administration from Sam Houston State University. He has served on several district committees, including the Safety and Security Committee and the Teacher Incentive Allotment Advisory Council. Josh served on the Teacher Leader Institute Training Team, served as a new Assistant Principal Mentor, and participated in the Aspiring Principal Institute, and I will add, is a Blended Learning Certified Trainer. Josh is completing his 18th year in the education profession. He started his career serving as a teacher, coach, and campus lead mentor at Thornton Middle School. His administrative experience began at Smith Middle School, serving as an academic achievement specialist and assistant principal, and he has served as an assistant principal at Cypress Park High School since 2018. Josh and his wife Nicole, who is a counselor at Keith Elementary School, have three children, Aiden, who will be in the eighth grade at Salliards, Jack, who will be in the fifth grade at Keith, and Emily, who will be in the third grade at Keith Elementary. Josh's hobbies include family movie nights, playing with his kids, and lifting weights. He shared that he comes from a long line of educators in his family, including his mom, who was a teacher and administrator in CFISD before retiring. Please join me in congratulating Josh Carroll.
I feel just like you, Dennis, wow, it's a great moment. President Jackson, board of trustees, Dr. Henry, thank you guys so much for this incredible opportunity. I am very honored and humbled to be serving as the next principal of Kayla Middle School, and I really look forward to building on the exceptional traditions and history of the Kayla community. And we just believe in every night, every day, and so I can't wait to collaborate with our community, our parents, and our staff, and really invest myself in that community. So it starts with my support here at home, so introduce my wife Nicole, who's a counselor at Keith Elementary. My son Jack would be upset if I didn't mention he was a great pitcher and loves baseball. My daughter Emily is a cheerleader, she'll be signed up again this year for the Keith Bears, cheering on that football team. And my son Aiden goes to Salliards, and he is in percussion and runs cross-country. And I have a lot of extended family here tonight, and I just really appreciate all of y'all being here to support me and coming out to just be there for me in this big moment. But I really want to especially point out my mom, she was an educator in Cypress Fairbanks for 25 years before she retired, and served as a teacher, instructional specialist, and assistant principal for so many years, and she was really my inspiration for going into education. And her servant leadership and just being a lifelong educator, she still educates our kids, so she hasn't quit, and is just a big inspiration to me and led me into education and just means the world to me, so. And I want to thank also, you know, just like Dennis had said too, there are so many, and many of you have said, there are so many people that poured into me over the years, just so many incredible mentors, so many incredible people in this district that invested their time and energy to build you up and help you to grow. It started for me with my principals, and I know Barbara Crook is here, I don't know where she's at, Barbara Crook? So she was my first principal at Thornton Middle School, and you talk about an inspiring catalyst. I mean, she truly saw in me potential, and she invested time and energy to grow me and put me in positions where I could grow and be successful, so it means the world to me that you're here, thank you. And I have Susan Higgins, I know she's back here too, she was my principal at Smith Middle School, and Susan just, you know, grew me. I was 28 when I started as an assistant principal, and so Susan had her work cut out to help me to learn leadership and what it really means to be a lifelong learner and to really just invest yourself in your staff and your students, and so thank you, Susan, for all you've done and continues to do to help me be successful every day. And Chris Heckert is here, and I had a wonderful opportunity to learn from truly one of the best communicators and just exceptional principals in the district, and so thank you, Chris, for that. And for my part team that's here, and Mr. Turner, one of my best friends, and he's principal over at Aragon Middle School, thank you for being here. And so it's just a great opportunity, so once again, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to be principal at Kayla.
And Josh mentioned football, so we'll just let you know, we're about at halftime right now on the announcement, so if you need to do a little stretch, you can do so, but we're about halftime. Our next principal to introduce is our new principal for Truitt Middle School, Dr. Plasse Plasse earned his Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Grambling State University, his Master of Science in Computer Technology and Education from Nova Southeastern University, and his Doctor of Education in Administrative Leadership from Walden University. He has served as a summer school principal, a mentor for new assistant principals, and also participated in the Aspiring Principal Institute. He has 22 years of experience in the education profession. He began his career serving as a teacher and director of instruction at Houston Heights High School. He joined Cypress Fairbanks in 2009 as a teacher at Campbell Middle School, and also served as an assistant principal and director of instruction at Campbell Middle School. Plasse served as the Director of Instruction at Cypress Springs High School, and has been the Associate Principal at Cypress Springs for the past two years. Plasse and his wife Trinette, who is a nurse educator at Texas Children's, have three daughters, Arianna, a graduate from Cypress Ranch, who is a teacher in New Orleans, Amber, a graduate from Bridgeland, and a future CFISD teacher, and Ayana, a graduate from Bridgeland, who plans on pursuing a career in pediatric occupational therapy. Plasse enjoys spending time with family, is active in his church, loves to travel, and loves to cook, and is known for his outstanding barbecue. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Plasse Williams.
Thank you, President Jackson, board of trustees, Superintendent Henry. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to lead Truitt Middle School. I had the opportunity to travel over and visit with the campus before the end of the school year, and I am truly excited about the things that are going on at Truitt Middle School. When I think about the community and the opportunity to collaborate with that community, I am truly inspired, because great things can happen with that. And when I think about the support that I have received from across the district, I am determined, because I know that when stakeholders work together, then the unbelievable can happen. We can bring out the best in everyone. So with me tonight, again, as Roy said, my support team is here, my wife Trinette, my youngest daughter, Ayana, and my middle daughter, Amber. My oldest daughter, again, is watching via stream, and Cyfair is waiting on you wherever the camera is, come on home. And then the many supporters that's out there, from my Campbell family, my Cypress Springs family, and also my new Truitt family, you know, thank you guys for your support. I do see several people in the audience too that's here to support, and I do want to especially point out, again, I'm going to call her my principal, Dr. Cheryl T. Henry. She has been an inspiration for me since my time here in Cyfair, she's molded me, she's had a big impact on my growth as a leader, and I thank you for that as well. So thank you once again, board, for trusting me to love and lead the Truitt family.
Thank you, Plasse. I'm pleased to introduce our new principal for Copeland Elementary School, Ms. Stephanie Stephanie received her Bachelor of Science in Academic Studies from Sam Houston State University and her Master of Educational Administration from Lamar University. She participated in the Aspiring Administrator Institute, the Aspiring Principal Institute, and has served as a summer school principal. She has 18 years of experience in education, serving as a fourth-grade teacher in Spring ISD before joining Cypress Fairbanks as a second and fourth-grade teacher at Copeland. She served as the English Language Arts Helping Teacher at the Instructional Support Center, and was then selected as an instructional specialist at Hare Grove Elementary School. She also served as a reading interventionist at Owens and Feast Elementary, and as an instructional specialist at Emory Elementary. She has served as an assistant principal at Copeland for the past five years. Stephanie and her husband Dwayne have four children, Christina, who is a teacher at Blile, but now is moving to the Broadington Center, Brenna, who is a teacher at Cypress Springs High School, Ryan, who just graduated from Langham Creek a couple of weeks ago, and Wesley, who will be in the eighth grade at Aragon Middle School. Stephanie enjoys family time, including camping, hiking, and anything outdoors. In addition, they are active in their church. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Stephanie Berger. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Stephanie Berger.
President Jackson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm truly humbled and honored to be named the next principal of Copeland Elementary. It's my heart, and it's my home. I've been very fortunate in Cy Fair. I've had many mentors who have helped push me along the way, starting with Lisa Kane, who brought me to Cy Fair in 2004. Ann Malonson, my outgoing principal, what an amazing leader to learn from. I would not be where I am today if it were not for her. Mentoring me, coaching me, pushing me, believing in me, loving me, supporting me, thank you. We'll make you proud, I promise. My husband, Dwayne, my rock. Our two girls, like Mr. Garcia said, who are not able to be here tonight, my son-in-law, my grandson, who will also start Cy Fair in the fall. Our oldest son, Ryan, who just graduated, he'll be attending Adam State University in Colorado in the fall, where he's continuing his lacrosse career on scholarship. My youngest son, Wesley, who is 13 today, spending his birthday with mom at a board meeting. He is also a lacrosse player. He's a percussionist in the Aragon Middle School Band. My parents, Jan and David Skrihat. My mom is the one who taught me to be a servant leader. She was our youth minister growing up, and needless to say, put me to work making a lot of phone calls at a very early age and serving the church very early on, so thank you for that, Mom. They've always been my biggest fans, my biggest supporters, my biggest cheerleaders, and they've always pushed me to be the best person that I can be. My colleagues and friends, my assistant principal Stacy Cranford, and my instructional specialist Peggy Spackman, thank you guys for always believing in me and supporting me, and for everyone watching live stream, I just appreciate your faith and support and belief in me as well. I'm very, very humbled to continue to serve in my community, at my home campus, with our amazing staff, our students, and our families, and to continue on the path of excellence that we've been working to achieve. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Stephanie. Obviously, we will continue, we have one principal and then an assistant superintendent, and excited to introduce our final principal that we're recognizing this evening for Bang Elementary School, Ms. Susan Bolado. Susan earned her Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies from Stephen F. Austin University and her Master of Educational Administration from Sam Houston State University. She too participated in the Aspiring Principal Institute, has served as a mentor for new assistant principals, and was a summer school principal at both Leader and Bang Elementary. And she also served on several district committees. Susan has 30 years of experience in education, serving as a 1st and 3rd grade special education teacher in Louisiana and at multiple grade levels at Millsap, Copeland, and Gleason Elementary. She also served as an instructional specialist at Gleason. In addition, she was the assistant principal for 12 years, serving at Gleason, Leader, and Post Elementary. Susan and her husband David have four children, Tracy, Josh, Bryce, and Brody. All four children are products of CFISD schools. Susan enjoys working in her garden and spending time with her family. Please join me in congratulating our new principal for Bang Elementary, Susan Bolado.
Thank you. President Jackson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry, thank you so much. I'm truly honored to be the next principal at Bang Elementary. I really look forward to working with the staff and the community to help all of our Bang Bears grow academically, socially, and emotionally. I do want to introduce some important people. My biggest supporter, my husband David. My mom, who never gave up on me as a child, thank you. My amazing sister Linda Tagan, her husband Parrish, and her two amazing daughters Natalie and Delaney. She is also, we are a family of education also. She is a teacher in KDISD. Most, I have my, two of my kids are here, my son Josh Bolado, Bryce Bolado is here. My son Brody Bolado is traveling with his work, and then my daughter and son-in-law live in Oklahoma City, so they're watching on TV. So then two very influential people in my life, I have my Aunt Joan Posma, you all know her as the namesake for Posma Elementary, and my Uncle Pete Posma, and my Aunt Carolyn Spillane, namesake of Spillane Middle School. So I'm very honored to have all of them with me today, and we have two very special family members at the end over there, Kelly Chan and Stephanie Nguyen. So thank you all. I wouldn't be here today without all of your support and influence throughout the years. I also had many administrators who helped me along the way. I wanted to say a special thank you to Janet Hoover, Melody Goffney, Christine Malonson, Dinah McMichael, but someone who I would not be here with right now, today, without her guidance, and she's trying to hide over in a corner, but thank you very much, Dr. Karen Stockton. And thank you again for this opportunity.
As you may recall, Dr. Carla Brosnahan announced her retirement earlier this spring, and I know that Dr. Henry will have some words about Carla and another member of the district support team meeting on Monday, but if I may just, you've heard so many comments about servant leader, being that servant first and leader second, and when I think of Dr. Brosnahan, she's just the, is the epitome of that, and it makes me think of something that we, we talk a lot about with our principals, and that model the behavior you want to see in others. Connect with those that you lead and involve them as much as possible in making decisions, and she does that each and every day. We're going to miss her dearly, but we are happy for her because she is a grandparent and has another one on the way, and will be able to spend more time, but she definitely will be coming back to assist us as a principal coach. So with that, I am happy to introduce to you our new assistant superintendent for elementary school leadership, Mr. Kenneth Henry. Kenneth received his Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from Lamar University and his Master of Education from Concordia University. He participated in the Harvard Leadership Program, the CFISD Presenter Institute, and a host of professional learning opportunities during his time as principal and the Director of Student Services. Kenneth has 24 years of experience as an educator. He served as a social studies teacher in Texas City ISD, a school social worker in Galveston ISD, and a life skills teacher in Lamarck ISD. In 2005, he joined the Cypress Fairbanks family as a 5th grade teacher and at-risk coordinator at Lee Elementary School. In addition, he served as a summer school principal at the Carlton Center for three years. After serving as an assistant principal at Holmesley Elementary and the Alternative Learning Center, he was selected principal at Durie Elementary School, where he served for five years. Kenneth is currently serving as the elementary and middle school director of student services. Kenneth and his wife Andrea have two sons, Kenneth, who graduated from Cypress Lakes and Sam Houston State University, and Kinson, who graduated from Cypress Springs, again, two weeks ago. Kenneth enjoys writing, traveling, and going to sporting events with his sons. We are extremely excited to welcome Kenneth to the school leadership team, where he will continue to advocate, serve, and support our outstanding principals and future leaders. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Kenneth Henry.
President Jackson, Dr. Henry, and Board of Trustees, this is truly an honor, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and I have a lot of family to thank as well, starting with my dear wife, who has been by my side since my first day in an educational setting 24 years ago. I want to thank her for that. She's my best friend and biggest supporter. I have both of my sons here with me today, one who didn't want to take off work, but I'm happy he did. My new graduate, Kinson, and Kenneth III is here. I have some nieces and nephews who came a long way to be here with us today, I want to thank them. My sister, Kamara, my mother, who, when I became an assistant principal, started telling people that I was an assistant superintendent 10 years ago mistakenly, so I think she willed this to happen, so I want to thank them for being here, but I definitely want to thank my brother Dedrick, who stepped away from his mayoral duties to be here today, and I've talked about my brother a lot to people over the years. He is my mentor, my role model, and the reason why I'm in education. He, I may have come in kicking and screaming, but he pulled me in education, I want to thank him for that. I have a lot of school families I want to thank. Of course, Durie Elementary, where I was blessed to be principal, and Holmesley family, the ALC West family, and the Lee Elementary School family under the leadership of Jody White and Barbara Fine, who I know is watching right now, and really gave me my foundation for how to lead and how to inspire and guide, so I really want to thank them as well. I have far too many supporters and mentors that I have time to thank tonight. I know some people ready to get to break, so I just want to thank everyone that I have worked with, that I have worked under, that have supported me and guided me to help me get to this point. But I do want to say thank you to the student services family, the whole student services office, the secretaries, the classroom management team. I want to say thank you to Dr. J. Simpson Butler, Dennis, who was only with us a short time, but definitely made a big impact, and Candy Medlin, just for all of their help and support. I've learned so much in that office. And last but not least, a special thank you to Dr. Gumake and Dr. Stewart, who I know isn't here tonight, but I want to thank them just for the opportunity to be in student services. It was a tremendous opportunity. I've learned so much that I know is going to help me in this new role. So thank you again. I am truly a product of great people, great school cultures, and great leadership that this district has to offer, and I'm just honored to be able to contribute in this new role.
And with the forbearance of the board, looking for some nods, you know, normally we have a short five-minute break, but this is the first time in 11 years that we have had so many wonderful people who have decided to step up and serve even more. So with the approval of the board, we're going to take at least a 10-minute break, and if it takes a little longer, we'll live with that. So it's now break time. Let's hang back up, shall we? Public comments, 3A. Patrons who have duly registered for policy BED Local may address the board and make public comments on an agenda item during or before the board's consideration of the item. The board may allow public comment on agenda items at all meetings. The board will continue with the remaining agenda after the registered patrons have had an opportunity to speak. Patrons who have registered to speak this evening may see the order of names listed on the screens to your right and to your left. Before your name is called, please move forward and sit in one of the two reserved seats on the front row. Our first speaker tonight is Stacy De Meyer.
Tonight, I'm speaking on Agenda Item 7C. Last month, I attended the SHAC quarterly meeting as a guest. Anyone who attends CFISD board meetings regularly or is active on social media knows that sex education is a hot topic in our district. We've been seeing a small, yet loud group of people spread false information about what is included in the sex ed curriculum, whether parents need to opt in or out, and what is required to be tested. I wanted to attend the SHAC meeting not only to become more informed on this topic, but to also ensure that other attendees do not leave the meeting and continue spreading false information. As interesting as attending the meeting was, it is truly unfortunate that there is a need to hold community members accountable, and that these community members are even enabled by some of the trustees. A disturbing campaign video for one of the trustees, who made most of the new SHAC nominations, discusses sex education in our district. In this video, the trustee claims that there are all sorts of sexual perversions creeping into our schools, contaminating the hearts and minds of our students. Minutes later, a pastor in the video speaks about how offenders, who he implied were school district personnel, who draw kids away from what they were raised with, would have been better off being drowned. It's clear that sex education is used as one of the many talking points for criticizing our district and attacking public education in general. And for this reason, I'm grateful that we have such competent and caring people like Ms. Gordon and Dr. Macias overseeing and involved with SHAC. The last meeting showed how they listen to feedback from parents, as well as SHAC members, and are making changes to the HSU to avoid confusion going forward, and in my personal opinion, give the naysayers nothing to feed off of. Thankfully, they are also standing firm on the inclusion of topics that some would prefer to be left out of the curriculum, because the experts agree that including these topics help to ensure that students are safe and in safe relationships. Thank you to all of the district employees who are involved with SHAC, as well as the SHAC members who volunteer their precious time.
Our next speaker is Tara Cummings.
Hello. I'm going to talk on 10J, 10K, and 10O, but I'm going to do it in under two minutes. As a parent and mental health professional, I'm glad to see on the agenda proposed agreements with community resource providers, specifically Advance Houston for their Healthy Relationships Program, and Harris County Resources for children and adults. So many of our students would greatly benefit from education, resources, and support with regard to building healthy relationships, parenting education, and career advancement in order to facilitate their optimal transition from high school to adulthood. Additionally, the services of the 19 Youth Service Specialists affiliated with HCRCA have never been more urgently needed than at this time. Thank you to our administrators for recognizing these areas of vital need and developing plans to better address them by partnering with the larger community. I also want to urge, or beg really, the district to finally begin implementing the equity audit recommendations toward addressing some of these same concerns. Also, if my 16-year-old ever finishes his driver's ed course, I'll have a new driver come August, and I've been fretting over the nightmare that is currently the intersection at Jarvis and Woods Spillane. I'm so glad to see a mention of a traffic signal there, and I appreciate the district's attention to both safety and the efficient flow of traffic around our campuses.
That concludes public comments. We will now proceed with the reports portion of the agenda. Item 7, Reports. Item 7A, the administration will present an oral report on the budget for the 2022-2023 school year. The presenter, Chief Financial Officer and CPA Karen Smith.
Before Karen gets started, just to look at the first slide of this from our May meeting, talking about the budget, we gleaned three priorities that the board had for the budget for the 22-23 school year, retain and recruit quality staff, address learning loss, and of course, student discipline. So this presentation will be a little bit different than May. Much of it will be the same, but there'll be a little bit of it's the same, and we just didn't rely on our associate superintendents and the superintendent to come up with some of the recommendations that we're going to make. We met with the principals as a whole. All principals were consulted. We spent plenty of time getting feedback from them, because let's face it, they're the ones on the forefront and know what the issues are on a daily basis. So some of the recommendations were, all of the recommendations we're making today were discussed with campus leadership, so we just wanted you to know that, and certainly there were a lot of different ideas from campus leadership, but we kind of, we kind of gathered it all around and got some consensus from our principals. So that's where some of these new ideas or new things that you'll see tonight come from. So having said that, Mr. Jackson, Trustees, I'll turn the meat and potatoes over to Karen.
Thank you, Dr. Henry, President Jackson. For the new board members, just so you know, school districts are required not only to adopt a budget for the general fund, but we're also required to adopt a budget for the debt service fund as well as the food service fund. School districts are required to adopt the budget if they have a June 30 year-end by June 30, or actually right before June 30, and we are required also to have a public meeting regarding the budget, as well as the proposed tax rate. That public meeting will be on Monday at 6:00. Before I get started, I would real quickly like to acknowledge Amanda Bowles, as well as Melissa McIner and Patrice Lang and Firmino Mariano in the Finance Department. They are the ones that work on this budget and do a lot of the work, and they have worked countless hours, so I want to thank them. And I also want to thank Sharita Franklin and Greg Ordigo, because anything I've asked for as far as different salary scenarios, they're the ones that have been working so tirelessly on this, so thank you very much. So thank you very much. Just a reminder of some of the factors that were influencing the budget, other than what Dr. Henry shared with you this year, are student enrollment and attendance, as well as the COVID-19 pandemic, which in turn has influenced things such as recruitment and retention, of supply chain issues, and inflation that we've been dealing with, everybody's been dealing with. Also, the available federal funding that's available, the stimulus funding, as well as recruitment and retention, increases in property values, and I've already mentioned the inflation issue. As a reminder, funding of school districts, the way it works in the state funding side, 99% of our funding comes from two sources. It comes from the state aid formula, as well as property taxes. And the state is always leveling us back out. We basically get a certain amount of revenue per pupil, and as our property values increase, they will decrease our state funding. The only way for school districts to really get additional funding is if your enrollment goes up or your average daily attendance. The property taxes are determined by the Harris County Appraisal District, and so if homeowners, if they are thinking the school district is raising their taxes, that is not the case. The taxes are, the property values are set by the Harris County Appraisal District. As a reminder, the tax rate is comprised of both the maintenance and operations tax rate, as well as the interest and sinking tax rate. The interest and sinking tax rate is the tax rate that is to service our debt or repay our debt. The maintenance and operations tax rate is what funds our general fund, our main operations. That maintenance and operations tax rate is capped at a certain amount that we are allowed to have it at without an election to the voters. The district continues to offer the optional homestead exemption, which is 20%. And the state aid formula is set in statute, and that is something that, for example, the basic allotment also is set in statute, as well as all the different funding formula, funding associated, for example, with your special population, such as special education, compensatory education, et cetera. The basic allotment was set at House Bill 3 at 6160. Any cost of education index, which actually has not been changed for, hadn't been changed for years, was rolled into this. So school districts receive no additional funding for inflation. So as costs go up, we still have the same amount of money of the 6160. As a reminder, general fund expenditures, 89%, a little over 89% of the budget, is payroll. Therefore, it is really hard to make meaningful change and make changes when you're considering you have to look at payroll that's 89% of the budget. Raises have a significant impact on the budget, and every 1% is about 8.45 million, and that's based on the current number of employees we have right now. In May, I shared with you the starting teacher salary for the five-year, or for the starting teacher, the five-year, the 10-year, the 15, and 20-year salaries of surrounding districts that are our main competition for 21-22. This slide shows you a comparison of the 22-23 starting teacher salaries that have been publicized by the same districts. Some of these districts have talked about what their plans are, their compensation plans are, but they have not yet adopted their budgets. In May, the district proposed a starting teacher salary of $60,000. However, based on the starting teacher salaries in the areas surrounding districts, administration is now recommending a starting teacher salary of $60,500. This salary will put us in line with our main competitors, which is Klein, Tomball, and Reflected on this slide is a 10-year history of the salary increases provided by the school board. It shows the salary increases since 2013-2014. District employees have received a raise for the last 10 years. In 21-22, not only did the board approve a 5% raise, but they also approved, which is really one of the highest that was in the state and one of the highest in the area. They also approved a retention stipend of $1,000 for hourly and paraprofessional employees. With the proposed salary increase, this will be the 11th year in a row employees have received a salary increase, if it's approved by the board Monday night. You will see here, and I'll go into more detail about the costs associated with it, for 22-23, we are recommending a 2% salary increase based on the midpoint or base, whichever is higher, as well as a $1,000 stipend. And I'll share more information on this in a little bit. The average percent increase, based on the 2% salary increase, based on the greater of midpoint or base, and the $1,000 stipend that administration is recommending, you'll see here that if you take the combined, this is showing the average increase for those particular categories. So for example, hourly support, the average percent increase will be 7.1% with the 2% plus the $1,000 stipend. Also, we are recommending it's the $1,000 for full-time employees, and then part-time employees would receive $500. We use this method in order to provide a greater percentage raise for our lower-paid or hourly employees and our paraprofessionals, and it equated to the approximate cost of a 2% raise. The stipend will also give administration time to study the impact of increasing the minimum hourly salary and the compression that can occur. And what ends up happening is if you raise that bottom amount to the entry-level employee, then they, you have other people within that pay grade that may have a lot more years of experience and have been at the district for a while, and they're making close to the same salary. In addition, what could occur is they may have a supervisor that's in a pay grade above that, and they're now making almost the same as their supervisor. So that's why the district wants to take time to make sure we look at market adjustments that need to occur whenever that happens. So this is the method that we felt was the best way to recommend doing something for those hourly employees during the time that we are studying the impact on the compression. Oops, I don't know why that went so fast. It's not working right. There we go, now it is. Think it just went off. I'm not sure why. Okay, if you can do it right there, Joel. Thank you. Appreciate it. And just as a reminder, the health insurance premiums will be going down this year. The Governor Abbott announced he was going to utilize coronavirus relief funds to ensure that no employee saw an increase in their premiums and health insurance premiums. So the premiums will be going down for all categories except for TRS Active Care 2. TRS Active Care 2 is the one that you can, employees can no longer become a part of, and TRS is trying to phase people out of that particular plan. So that is a, it's a calculated plan with TRS to not assist those employees that are on TRS Active Care 2. The property, the maintenance and operations tax rate is compressed to the lower of the state compressed rate or the local compressed rate. So every year, we get the compressed rate at the state level, which this year was based on property values increasing of about 4.36%. And that creates a maximum compressed rate of 80.8941, or 89 cents, and 8.8941 cents. And then we compare that to the local compressed rate, which is based on how much property values increase within the area. So the compression works so that whenever property tax, when property values go up more than 2.5%, they compress the tax rate down, so the taxpayer does not see more than a 2.5% increase in their payment with the maintenance and operations side. The current-year property values will then affect your tax compression. State aid is based on current-year state, current-year state comptroller property values. In the past, it was based on prior-year values, but with House Bill 3, they switched to current-year values. This year, we have the option to access what's called three disaster pennies. And they call them disaster pennies because they are pennies that the district can access in the year after a disaster has occurred to help offset some of the costs associated with those, with that disaster. So thus the term disaster pennies. And what that allows the school districts to do is adopt additional pennies to help offset those costs without having a tax rate election, because we are at the maximum amount of additional pennies that we can add to the maximum compressed rate at this current time, which is five pennies. So this will allow us to access three disaster pennies, and it can only be done in the year, like I said, following the disaster. The disaster is the Winter Storm Yuri, and it will create about an additional $38 million in funding for one year. So it would be for the year of 22-23. In 23-24, those pennies go away. But based on tax rate compression, because our property values have gone up about 13.3%, which is higher than the state amount of 4.36%. So our maintenance and operations tax rate will be compressed down to compensate for anything over 2.5%. So even with those three disaster pennies, taxpayers will see a decrease in their tax rate. The cost of the budget considerations that we wanted to discuss with you tonight that administration is recommending for you to review is a salary increase, as I said, of 2% on the greater of midpoint or base, as well as increase, an increase in the teacher starting salary to $60,500. The cost of that is $18.2 million. Also, we are recommending a retention and recruitment stipend of $1,000 for full-time employees. The cost of that would be $16.5 million. It mentioned in May was the substitute pay increase for substitutes. The, our recommendation includes that all substitutes would receive an increase of $18 per day. So for example, we're recommending that the degree teacher rate increase from $92 per day to $110 per day, which for them is an increase of about 20%. This would make us competitive with other districts in the surrounding areas, and the cost is based on an 80% fill rate, and the estimated cost is $4.2 million. Also, we have in the budget additional teachers and paraprofessionals for growth, and this is based on the projected growth that we will have, as well as adding teachers based on special instructional arrangements, for example, in special education, where we have to add additional teachers. The cost of that will be approximately $15 million. And then all of the increases, whether it be in salaries or additional, additional staff, consequently, benefits and teacher retirement are affected. So showing here is the increase in benefits in TRS associated with our recommendations, which is $9.8 million. Dr. Henry mentioned our conversations with the principals, and based on the campus principals, they said what would help them with discipline is at the middle schools and elementary schools, being, having the option to have, well, actually, be disciplined in combination, maybe reducing some workload on the counselors, is assistance with behavioral interventionists and a testing coordinator. So they have a choice of picking one or the other based on the needs at that campus. Some of the campuses indicated, what I, I don't need a behavioral interventionist. What I really need is a testing coordinator. So they will be able to make that decision based on their needs. So it'd be one at the middle school, all the middle schools, and one at all the elementary schools, and the cost of that would be $6 million. Also included in the budget, which was mentioned at the May board meeting, is the operating cost to open new facilities. This includes McGowan Elementary, the VPAC, the administration building, and the additional transportation center. Also included are increases in the fuel and utility costs, which are directly tied to inflation that we've been dealing with, as well as stipends for water polo. That is a new UIL sport, so that's why that one's included, as well as increasing stipends for early childhood, special ed, and adaptive behavior paraprofessionals, increasing stipends for the deaf education interpreters, and then increasing the stipends for bilingual teachers. The cost of that is about $800,000. Also, in the recommendation that was mentioned in May, is an increase in the 230- and 260-day custodian starting pay to $12 an hour, and that will cost about $400,000. And lastly, this is kind of a sum of just miscellaneous items, is a net increase in property insurance, our software license, supplies, and contracted services, as well as other operating costs, for a total cost of $2 million. So first, I'd like to share with you the general fund budget. This is the revenue side. The proposed budget is based on accessing those three disaster pennies that I mentioned to you earlier, as well as all the costs that I just reviewed. The general fund revenues consist of local revenues of $601.9 million, which is mostly local property taxes. The state revenue is $430.9 million, which is comprised of state funding and TRS on behalf. The federal revenues of $25 million is comprised of our school health and related services, which is the reimbursement for Medicaid-eligible expenses associated with our special education students, and providing those services, as well as ROTC, and then our indirect cost on our grants that basically help offset the costs of district incurred by administering grants. And the other sources of income of $200,000 represent money received from auctions that we would anticipate receiving. School districts are required to adopt a budget by fund and function. Therefore, I will be, after we go over this and we understand what the board's wishes are, we'll come back to you on Monday with the information, with the expenditures by function, because we are required by the Texas Education Agency to adopt it in that format. The general fund expenditures consist of, you'll see here, payroll cost, contracted services, supplies, materials, other operating, and capital outlay. Once again, you will see that payroll costs are 89% of our total expenditure budget. The deficit of $102.3 million assumes all positions will be filled and all expenditures, all the budgeted funds will be spent, that are budgeted by the different departments and the campuses. As discussed in May, I shared that this is a transition budget. We need to reach out to all of our legislators and ask them to, for an increase in the basic allotment, as well, that takes care of looking at inflation and what is going on with inflation. Oh, excuse me, I failed to mention that with the federal funding of the $102.3 million, we will be able to offset that deficit in 22-23, so that we will actually not have a deficit in our financials for 22-23. Also is the debt service budget. As I mentioned, this is the one to service our bonds and to repay our debt. The debt service budget reflects a balanced budget. The local revenues is the INS side of the tax rate. The state portion is funding that the district receives or holds us harmless by increasing the state-mandated exemption, state-mandated exemption that went from $25,000 recently to $40,000 on any homeowners that have a homestead exemption. And then a small amount of federal revenue that we receive as a subsidy from the federal government associated with our qualified school construction bonds. And then the expenditures are the current-year expenditures that we will have to principal and interest payments on our debt. The next budget is the food service budget that the board must adopt, and it is also a balanced budget. The local revenue is primarily for à la carte sales, and then the federal revenue is the money that we receive for commodities, and then reimbursement with our free and reduced lunch program. lunch program. And then the food, the costs you will see here primarily are the cost to service, uh, the foods, the food service program, and then some maintenance and operations cost. And then a unique one that's different this year, you will see here, is debt service. We're actually not paying any debt service with this. There is a new governmental accounting standard that we are required with our financial statements, and you're actually see this when you adopt the budget by function on Monday. For the general fund, we have to pull any leases that we have out of where they used to be coded and code them in debt service. So it is a new requirement that we have to report on, and that will, uh, we will go into much more detail on that when we present our financial statements to you, which typically is done in November. So now I'm available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the budget and our presentation.
Before we start with the questions first, Karen, thank you for a very thorough, uh, report. I do want to mention to the viewing audience, I'm exceptionally proud of my colleagues up here, because they put together a series of very thoughtful, both current term as well as longer term written questions that they submitted to management, and they received those answers back, uh, and it was done in a collective fashion, uh, so that we could see the questions and we could see the answers. We did not communicate with each other in the process, uh, so we followed the law. But I, I was impressed, because I think we touched all of the major points, uh, as well as a number of substantive points. So even though those questions may or may not appear tonight or Thursday, uh, trust me, as a recovering CFO and a recovering CPA, I was, uh, I was well pleased with the questions. So having said that, uh, let me start with the left, uh, of the podium here, uh, and I won't start with more experienced members, simply because the questions were so solid. Uh, so I'll start with you, Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, President Jackson. So one of the questions that I had, um, one is that the comment was mentioned that our financial advisors, uh, let me just focus the question a little bit. So regarding expenditure budget surplus? And so our Post Oak advisors had directed or advised the board that the recommendation was to maintain a fund balance of no less than four months. And so while I'm listening to the presentation, I just wanted to articulate, uh, one of the questions was, currently it's at, I think, 5.5 months?
It's a little, I think, what we, uh, it's a little over, uh, fi, it's over five and a half months, probably close to about 5.8, I, we think is where it'll end up after this school year, based on our expenditures this current school year. But then it, based on our recommendations, it will go down to about 5.3, somewhere around that, at the end of 22, 23, and then by the end of 23, 24, it'll go down to four months.
And so the question was, will our bond rating, i.e. how the investment community values us, uh, i.e. how well we can sell and service our bonds, will our bond rating remain, uh, at the current and high level that it is now, even going down to that surplus of four months?
Based on what our financial advisors have told us, they do not believe it will go, our bond rating would go down, as long as we maintain it four months. They did say that if we do several larger draws on fund balance, or a large draw on fund balance, what the bond rating agencies typically ask us for is our plan to prevent further drawdowns of fund balance. Also, something to share with you is we looked at different areas. We looked at our financial advisors' recommendations, so that we do not, uh, have a decrease in our bond rating, as well as the financial integrity rating system of Texas, which has several items associated with fund balance, where they don't want the fund balance to go down more than a certain amount over a period of three years, or have less than 90 days cash on hand. Also, we looked at the board policy on fund balance, which says we will not go below three months in fund balance. So a combination of all those were taken into consideration.
Got it. Uh, for the viewing audience, part of the reason that we're describing, um, use of this fund audience, actually, President Jackson, when you get to speak, it may be, you know, I recommend that you walk people through that decision process, uh, and I'm quoting you here, "You think it's raining." Uh, and so it may be helpful for people to understand the context, uh, when we come back around to you. And so now that we're talking about lowering that fund balance by increasing pay this year and the year following, how long, where does the fund surplus usually come from? What are the combination of events that occur? How did we get to the fund balance that we're at now? And how long does, would it theoretically take to build it back up?
It's a good question. The fund balance where we are now, to be honest, it's because the state does not fully fund the cost of education. Uh, the, they, they did a study, actually, many, I'm gonna say, I'm trying to think the number, they've done several studies, and they looked at the cost to educate a child. And when they saw how high that cost was, that's not what they actually gave school districts. They said, this is all we can afford. So part of the problem has been that they do not fully fund it. Also, the other problem is there's not an inflation factor, as I was sharing. There is no way that, you know, when you think that you're giving raises and costs are going up, as well as, there's a required at the elementary level, student-teacher ratio. When you have all that going on, and you're not getting an increase in funding, it's very hard to be able to maintain where you are. And so that's why districts get into a situation, such as a deficit situ, situation. Also, we've had, uh, unexpected costs associated with COVID. As you well know, we've got the S.R. money to help offset that, but there's also been inflation. There is pressure associated with staff and, and salaries, because the market out there in industry has the ability to increase the, uh, what they charge, uh, the consumer. They take those costs and they tie it in and pass it on to this consumer every time they have an increase in cost. Well, the districts don't have that luxury. So that's how you get in a situation where you're having to utilize fund balance. Some of the things that would, uh, possibly help fund balance, uh, as I, uh, the fund balance, once you're in a deficit, I mean, we cannot start building a surplus until our revenues exceed our expenditures. So we, some of the things that might help us not realize the deficit to the extent that we're sharing with you would be if our enrollment's higher than we expect, and our, we get more funding that way, if our average daily attendance goes up. Our average daily attendance has been down this current year at about little, around 92%. So that has made an impact. Every 1% down is about 7.3 million to the school district. In addition, uh, every year, we do, we, I work with our tax office, and we, uh, basically, it's the equivalent of you protesting your property values. We, we have a property value audit, and with, and protest those values with the state comptroller. And, uh, some years we get, it's, some years it's just about 4 million, give or take. Some years it's a little more. We've gotten as much as 7 or 8 million. But we protest those, that we might come in. It targeted plan to decrease expenditures, as well as if the board ever makes, or if we look at situations such as, we do want to increase the tax rate, and we do a voter approval tax rate, or something of that nature. So those are some of the ways that either fund balance would not be as impacted, or we could raise revenue.
Um, for the viewing audience, um, I, I, I want to communicate, I, I, what we're talking about here is a really serious approach. It's a very, the decision we're making to dip into fund balance is not to be taken lightly, and I think deserves highlighting that effectively with the federal stimulus that we have now and in the next year, the, the, the work that we're doing today, we're doing, knowing that we have a, uh, that we need to work over the next two years to see an increase in our per-child allotment and other measures, so that we can avoid decisions that we hope we don't have to make. And I invite any other board members with more experience than I to add color to that.
Just, just to add one thing, and, and it doesn't make anybody feel any better, but we're one of 1,000 school districts in the same boat, without some type of mechanism to increase the basic allotment, to, you know, to, to provide an increase for inflation. Certainly, um, uh, we're one of the hardest hits, because we still provide the 20% local homestead exemption, which all-in M&amp;O and INS is nearly $90 million. Is that correct?
It, it's close to 90 million, Dr. Henry, if we had never had it.
Right.
But it's, it's a little over 70 million for, would be for us if it was ever, went away, and that's because of frozen values. And once values are frozen for anybody over 65 or disabled, they stay that way.
So the, the state, although they promote lower, for districts and entities to have lower tax rates, they punish us for doing what they ask us to do, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. President Jackson, I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. And, and for the viewing audience, Luke asked only one of his questions, if I remember right, he had about 15 different questions that he submitted in writing, uh, and, and they were all dandy questions. So thank you for taking the time to go through that. Ms. Blackshear.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Karen, I want to make sure I understand this, so that our viewing audience understands this. If we are to approve the 2% pay increase with the addition of the $1,000 retention and recruitment stipend, stipend, that would essentially equate to a 4% raise?
As far as cost to the school district, it would equate to a 4% raise, as far as cost.
Right.
However, as I shared, the, by doing the stipend, you know, the hourly employees will realize, if you combine the stipend with the 2%, a greater increase than, for example, administrative.
Right, right, right. And that's because their pay is low.
Yes.
Right. I understand that. I had another question. And then also, um, you know, we've been, gosh, as far as, as long as I can recall, going back to Dr. Anthony's days when I was involved with the school district, uh, we have been dealing with not receiving our fair share of the allotment by the state. And this has been an ongoing battle. And, um, you know, I can say for myself that if I could, I would give our teachers a 10% pay increase, because we know, I think all of us up here, uh, on this dais, know how hard you work, and can, can say with certainty that you have earned it. But to do so would be fiscally irresponsible by us to do that. And it's not a matter of us not wanting to compensate you fairly, and Lord knows, these last two, two years have probably been the most challenging of your career. Uh, and we certainly recognize that. But we are constrained by, by our state, and the way we get their attention is at the ballot box. And we need to make sure and continue to communicate, because if they're receiving letters from you on that matter, listen, they're gonna take heed, because they know there's an election around the corner. But, uh, you know, I, I honestly say to you, I wish we could do more, and if we could, I would be 100% in favor of that. But I think, given the facts that we have, we are doing the best that we can. And, um, I appreciate everything, all our, our staff, custodians, food service, transportation workers, teachers, paras, administrators do, because we are, we are successful because of you. And, um, and the real six, successors we saw graduate a few, uh, short weeks ago, saw them, uh, be successful because of what you do, uh, at your schools. So I guess that concludes my comments for now.
Ms. Hyderman.
Thank you. Um, Karen, thank you so much for all your hard work and the hard work of your team. Um, I do have a couple just general statements, and then some specific questions. Um, as, uh, Dr. Henry has mentioned, the state has really frozen our revenues, um, while our expenses continue to go up. And we all understand that when revenues are greater than expenses, we can, we have a surplus, and we can add to fund balance. When expenses are greater than revenues, there's a deficit. Um, I remember when I first started attending board meetings many years ago, and I would sit in the audience and listen to the budget discussion, and there was a deficit, and they would, the board would approve a budget that showed a deficit, and I was just mortified, um, because I come from the business world, right? But then as I watched over the years, while the budget started that way, it always ended up with a surplus, because of really good, strong financial management techniques, um, and good fiscal responsibility. We were recognized, uh, at the state level for that, and we always ended up with, we came out whole, and we ended up with a surplus. And that's how our fund bill, balance built every year, um, even though it started off with a deficit. Because of the current state legislation and the funding formulas, that will no longer be the case.
Correct.
We understand that now. That time has passed, and unless there are changes made in the last, the next legislative session, next year, um, ISDs, um, uh, will fail financially, and it's set up that way. And, and it will be that way unless it changes. Um, I made some notes about fund balance. Um, it is an indicator of financial stability and financial strength. Um, it's sort of like a savings account, but I think a lot of people don't recognize it's also used as a cash management tool. We don't receive our state funding until after the school year starts, but we have to pay people, right? So we use our fund balance to pay, we use it as a cash management tool, and then we backfill that when we finally receive our state funding. So it's not just a big chunk of money that sits there. Um, it gets used constantly. Is that correct?
Correct. It's actually more like a checking account.
Right.
Is the way I would equate it, and the balance goes up and down.
Right, versus a savings account. Um, it's also not a rainy day fund, because, um, again, it gets used as more as a cash management tool than a, than a pot of money that we just use. Now, we do sometimes use it, uh, in case of a disaster. We've used it with hurricanes, floods, the explosion, um, at the, at that facility, remember that? Um, the ice storm. So we use it for that, but it's because we're waiting for reimbursement from our insurance companies and from FEMA. So again, we use that just to help us cover our expenses and get our schools up and running again quickly, um, and then we wait for the money to backfill. The state, however, does have a rainy day fund. I just want to remind everybody of that. It has currently $12 billion in it. Um, and by the beginning of the next session, it's gonna expect it, because gas prices are so high, to have $15 billion in it. It's a huge, growing pile of money. Uh, it has been unused during hurricanes, floods, economic downturns, and times of high inflation.
You are correct, and Julie, I'm glad you brought this up, because the rainy day fund is truly a big savings account for them.
It's a big pile of money in Austin.
Versus a checking account.
Right.
Because they're not allowed to adopt a budget that is a deficit budget. So it truly is extra money.
Um, on May 21st, Governor Abbott tweeted, "Texas is awash in cash." Texas has amassed major surpluses and is expecting to have a surplus between 12 and 15 billion dollars next session. That's on top of the rainy day fund. That's in addition. That's extra money. So I just wanted to say, before I ask my questions, there is money for teacher raises, there is money for school safety, there is money for closing the learning gaps, and there is money for your mental health. It is in the state capital. It is It is not here in SCIFIR. Karen, I want to confirm with you the site, the budget we're looking at when we talk about pulling down our fund balance to, because of the deficit. The way I read it, it is, we're looking at not having raises in the next school year.
That is correct, based on those, on the estimates, yes.
Okay. And that's because we're, right now, we're depending on these federal funds to keep us afloat, and those funds expire as do the disaster pennies.
Correct.
Before the end of 20, of 2023, 2024.
Yes, the disaster pennies will go away as, after '22, '23.
Right.
And then as of September 30th, 2024, we will have had to spend all of our federal stimulus money, and there will not be enough federal stimulus money to offset the deficit in '23, '24.
Okay. So raises that we give this year impact whether or not we can offer raises next year?
Correct.
Okay. And changes at the state level will impact whether or not we will make cuts the next year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, here's my questions. I asked some questions, um, uh, just through email, as Mr. Jackson mentioned. And one of my questions had to do with school safety, or a couple of the questions did. And I realized I was asking those questions more from a place of emotion, and I was just, I needed to, I needed to go to, I need to find out what, uh, the subject matter experts wanted, what they were looking for. So my question is, um, uh, what are the budget needs for CFISD, for the police department, for the upcoming year that we should consider in order to address concerns about school and student and staff safety?
I would like to, I think Chief back there, I would like Chief Mendez to come up and respond to that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
So the question is, what, what priorities do we have? And, and as always, our, our priority is the safety and security of the campus and the students inside the campus. As you know, and I've talked to you all about this before, you know, through the facility upgrades that we did, and we've been doing through the 2019 bond and the bonds prior to that, with all the upgrades that we're doing with the, uh, the mantraps or the security vestibules, the bullet resistant glazing or the glass that we're putting in, the card access systems, the fencing, the camera systems and, and such. I look at priority a little different in staffing levels because I want to make sure that we're not overtaxing the district and we're being good steward to the taxpayer money, and we're able to provide an adequate, no, not an adequate, a more than adequate response. We want to be on scene in the event of an incident within a minute or seconds. I always say that our response time to an emergency will be less than four minutes, knowing that our patrol division, our secondary campuses that are in close proximity to our elementaries will all respond, as well as Harris County Precinct 4, Precinct 5, the constable's office, DPS. They're all going to come in the event of an emergency. To ensure that I have staffing that increases our ability to cover the, the campuses, if you ask me, do I need more, I would say, to be fair, I don't need 57 elementary campus officers, but I could use maybe four to six additional officers to cover patrol. So that we always have that redundant coverage to ensure that we can respond and handle an incident as it occurs at a campus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, and I, I wanted to understand that better because, again, I was, my original question was making an assumption. And, uh, but I also realize we have to be very cautious about adding large numbers of people. Because if we're looking at possibly having to do cuts the following year, we don't want to bring on a bunch of people, right? And that leads me to my other question. This elementary, the elementary and middle school, additional staffing, 76 positions, $6 million. I'm, I'm concerned about that. Because, again, bringing on 76 new positions at a cost of $6 million a year, and then possibly having to cut people in a year. So I would like us to maybe as a board, think about that. Maybe there's other things we can do with current staff to address behavior or testing at these campuses that doesn't require additional people and personnel costs. And I was hoping, I was trying to run some numbers, that if we save $6 million there, we could put it into a higher raise. It's just really hard to make the numbers work. It really is. Even I looked at like a 2.5% raise, looked at a 3% raise. But if we do a 3% raise, it's for sure 0% next year, and we might have to cut sooner. I mean, I just, I, I'm, to Debbie's point, I wish we could do more. And I'm just trying to squeeze out another half percent, and I'm not sure that we can make it work. If we not do this, the, if we don't do the additional 76 people at the elementary and middle school, that saves $6 million, we could, and then we look to see about addressing the police department's needs and what those costs would be for six P, six, you know?
The cost, uh, we looked at the cost, we believe it'll be somewhere around $411, $412,000 to address those needs.
Okay. So maybe we can add $412,000, reduce $6 million, and then possibly see if we can maybe do a little bit, I don't know. I don't know if we can do a half percent more, but if we could do maybe another stipend, I don't know. I just, I just would like to ask my colleagues to think about, um, seeing how we can move these dollars around. I think that's, I think that is my question. Yep, that's it.
And Julie, if it will help you, about another half percent would probably be about 4.2 million.
For the viewing audience, when we ask questions offline, we wind up with more comments during the Q and A period as opposed to questions, but, but that's okay too. Mr. Henry.
Thank you. And thank you, Karen, for your thoughtful questions and answers to us, both offline and today. I know you went through a lot of hurdles to get this information, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. I'll keep it brief. You talked about the average increase for the hourly support, 7.1%.
Yes, sir.
And then, um, if I flip over to the increase for the custodial starting pay, the $12 an hour, does that take into account the stipend for that, or is that not taken?
The, the, okay, the seven, average amount of 7.1% takes into account the 2% raise and the stipends. That's how we came up with that amount. It does not take into consideration going to the $12 per hour.
Okay. So, I mean, I have an answer for this, you can always get it to me later. What would be the new hourly rate with the stipend, basically, on a yearly basis? Trying to, trying to figure out, because I would like to see that number get to a higher amount for our, the people. Because that's a very point, I mean, $400,000 is not a lot of money in a going budget. I mean, Julie mentioned talking about $6, $6 million of reducing that. I would like to see our people who do the, the most work for us, our staff and our custodial buildings, maybe giving them more money, especially when we've cut a lot of them this year. Maybe that'd be an idea, just a thought process. But if you can tell me that, maybe email later, tell me instead if you don't have the answer to that question.
So you're, I'm, I'm going to be sure I understand the question you're asking.
Let me rephrase the question to you.
Are you asking the cost?
Yeah, so what's, what's, $12 per hour is the new starting pay for custodial staff, correct?
Would be the minimum starting pay, plus they would get the $1,000 stipend.
On top of that.
On top of that. Then, the custodians that are above, that are not starting, you know?
They already have a higher pay.
Have a higher pay, they would get the 2% of midpoint or base, whichever is higher, plus the $1,000 stipend.
Okay.
Which will be paid in two payments, one in the fall and one in the spring.
Okay. Okay. You mentioned in future budgets that we may have to cut unless the legislative makes additional relief to us. Have we in the past ever had to do this?
Excellent question. I see Debbie shaking her head because she's, she's fully aware of that. Actually, Mr. Henry, we even have on our website, under the financial area, the different reductions the district had to make over a period of time. We actually, the first cuts were, our fund balance was too low, and we were trying to increase our fund balance. Then later, all the districts had a situation, it was after 2008 financial crisis that ended up affecting the state as well, is that it came to a point that revenues that were going to be coming in could not cover the cost. So they, what they, what basically happens is the state, it's called proration, they, they lower our revenue so that they're not going to be, because they have to balance their budget. So they lower their revenue. And that particular situation, we had 47 million less in state funding, and we had to make cuts. We had to figure out what to do.
And just to add to that, Mr. Henry, I went through that over in Galena Park at that time. We had did the same thing over there and up to a smaller scale. But nobody that I knew of belly ached at the state because we were going through a major recession. No one had any money. People understood the state didn't have any money, although it turned out they had a little more than they thought they did. But that's, that's not true this time around. The state is flush with, with cash, and our own very conservative governor has said that. So it's a different situation this time.
Excellent point.
And my last question on this is, have you put together any scenarios if, to address this? If we do get a flat allotment, which, hoping we don't, but if we do get a flat allotment, have you start putting together scenarios for what we might have to do for next year?
Well, I will.
Let me answer that, Karen, first. We'll have a lot of cafeteria option for you of how we can increase revenue, which are not pleasant ways, by the way. But we, we've already had these discussions, and then we're going to have our cabinet retreat in about a week and a half. And that's going to be one of the main topics of, let's start preparing ourselves in '23, '24 for what we are going to have to do to get to where we'll have to be. And that won't be fun either.
And just so I understand for the viewing public as well, like you mentioned, that means legislation has to be changed through state.
Yes.
Correct. This is a legislative amendment, state amendment has to be passed, then we all have to vote on that, is that correct?
It, it actually would not be something you vote on, but what it would have to do with is the legislature having a bill that changes the funding formula.
Correct.
To school districts. And they would have to agree upon that.
And they don't meet again till when?
It's in the odd years. So in 20, January of 2013, they meet every other year in odd years. So the first year that we would benefit from that would be the school year of '23, '24.
Okay. Making sure.
And that's the good part of where we are, is the ESAR money is covering us until we see what the legislature does, so.
So we can't impact, is my point.
Not, not right now, no.
But for future.
Yes. Well, in '23, '24, yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Karen, for your time. Thank you.
Dr. Blas, again.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you, Karen, and your team for incredible presentation and also the cooperation. That's the finance, HR, police department, all those who come together to form this and you, the way you present it. And Dr. Henry, you answered one of my questions, that, that 1,000 districts out of what, 1,610, or how many are in the state?
About 1,042. That's true.
So that's a large, large, this is not an issue that we alone are facing. And so that's something we can hope has some voice at the, at the state level. I felt like Debbie, you captured my heart incredibly. We have, we have such amazing teachers and all levels of staff. I got to attend a Lobo Heart session over at the RRR conference. And just the intentionality and the way and the heart and the fact that costs are going up for everyone everywhere, so. And then Julie, thank you, just the ways you ask questions to craft ways, how could we get a greater raise for our people? I think that is, um, I'm with you, and I would be eager to see. That raises another question I have for Dr. Henry. I deeply respect the process of talking to the campus leaders who are on the ground, trying to figure out what it was they would need. And so I'd like to hear just a little bit more to Julie's question about those positions that we would be adding and then have the risk of having to cut. I always have a little bit of a question when it's across the board, everyone's getting equal resource, because I don't think our campuses have equal challenges necessarily. I enjoyed the idea of freedom for them to choose the testing coordinator, which is never sexy or exciting to hear from this, especially with these discussions, but also understanding that discipline is such a concern. And I was surprised to hear that high school wasn't looking for that kind of support. So could you tell us a little more about that discussion so that we could have a bit of a fair conversation about adding on positions that would have to potentially face cutting?
Well, first of all, we, we established the parameters that the board had established, the, the three things that I talked about. And of course, probably the biggest concern we had this year on campuses were discipline, which we're going to take a much more hands-on approach this year, whether we approve any new positions or not. Just we're going to start off the year making sure that the year goes much smoother. But that was a big concern of all levels, was discipline on, on campuses, so they were trying to address that. And then, of course, mental health is a huge part of our campuses. And making sure that our counselors have the time to meet with the students they need to, especially, and we, we, we talk about this a lot, but early intervention at the elementary and middle school. Because sometimes in high school, I'd never say it's too late, but if you catch it earlier, you have a better chance to, to address that. So that was kind of the, the thought process. And I would ask Teresa, if you don't mind, to add some more of that, because she led our discussion.
No, I think, I think you captured that well. I mean, I think the campuses were, you know, focusing their feedback to us based on the parameters as Dr. mentioned, Dr. Henry mentioned that we established. And, you know, the, the flexibility that we are providing with a testing coordinator or a behavior interventionist is kind of meeting needs because in addition to that flexibility, know that our staffing model in general is targeted based on need. The higher their economically disadvantaged population, the more staff they receive. In addition to that, our Title I campuses receive additional funds that they're able to go out and create plans that best meet the needs for their campus, which may be additional staff. In some instances, they have utilized Title I funds in order to purchase, if you will, a behavior interventionist. So in kind of creating this model, we thought that that in, at a minimum, if we establish that as a district standard, then they would not be supplanting, or that would be a supplanting issue if they had a behavior interventionist, but they would be able to use their Title I money in a different area. So it does, it does allow the ability for some flexibility based on the need at the campus. Great question about the high school. You know, I think we went to them initially, talking even about an additional assistant principal. And I really, I think the message that we received, and I hope I capture it based on, you know, that conversation that we had that day, I, I don't know that they necessarily believe more people is the answer. I think that they really want to feel that there is a process and a system for really supporting them and really firmer, you know, more consistent approaches to addressing the disruptive behavior on their campuses. And, you know, we all were a little shocked at some of the challenges they were facing. I think campuses themselves were challenged and shocked at the beginning of the year. We were hopeful that we were going to be able to allow that transition of getting students back into structured environments and work with them and keep them in school. That was our goal, keep them in school, keep them in class. But the disruptive behavior just, you know, was not being effective, and obviously, it was not improving learning. And so we modified that approach and really supported them in being able to remove those disruptive students. So in saying all of that, I do think that having, you know, a full year behind us with students back on campuses, those campuses, I mean, they basically just, I mean, they worked their tails off in making certain that everything was being managed well in their class while addressing all the academic needs of their students. And I do believe that with our support, they're going to be in a much better place come August. High schools have a lot more flexibility with their staffing, the way we staff, than our middle schools and high schools. They just do. Elementaries, rather. They have a little more flexibility. There is a testing quarter. There is a testing coordinator allocation at our high schools. In addition, they have a special education specialist. They have some other specialized positions that the middle schools and elementarys do not have. And so what that forces at those levels is for them to utilize their staff, trying to fill some of those other needs. Now, the issues are bigger and more complex at the high school, too. I mean, that is reality. So that's just some of the discussion and thought behind that. And, you know, we're going to do whatever we can to support those campuses the best we can, whether we, it's a behavior interventionist testing coordinator or not. So I hope I answered your question.
You did really great. Dr. Henry, if you are an amazing and experienced superintendent, you've done this and you have great instincts, I feel like, is it a fair characterization to say that maybe the adjustments that can be made in supporting the campuses from things we'll do as a board and the administration could be the difference maker for discipline, not bringing on staff members for those positions? Is it enough?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, we have a great student services department, of course, Roy leading our campus leadership team. We'll make those adjustments. You ask principals what could make their job a little easier and kind of set up the parameters and they'll, they'll give you an answer to that. And I'll tell you, I'm not going to say we made a mistake last year the way we started because our goal, we knew we had to keep kids in school. We just found out that the 18 months was more than some of them could handle. And so we had, we reversed course before Thanksgiving. And I'm hoping, I've told the principals our last meeting of the year, I said, this year's going to be better. It's going to be a little better. But we're still going to have to establish who's in charge at the beginning of the year and that's going to be a real focus of ours as we start, start the year. But our principals are pretty amazing, as you met some of just the new ones tonight, you could see that. They're going to work with what they give, what we give them and they understand our limitations. So to answer your questions, they can do anything.
I believe in them also. And is there, I don't believe in my heart, but I want to ask the question again from your wisdom, is there any form of not funding this many positions, but any kind of flexible positions that would be able to be dispatched to the places where the 18 months is still showing up on the children? I don't know in a campus leadership position, if I felt like any outside position that I didn't own at my campus was something that I had the best result from. However, could, is there a small, small need or could there be a small dispatched army that could be funded just to have that flexibility? Should there not be, should a few places be a little bit more resistant to that change?
There were, there were some of the principals. It wasn't a majority that, and I cannot remember what the initials stand for, but the long-term subs that we provided, we just said, you're going to have a sub the whole year, it's just someone on your campus.
A.I.S.
A.I.S., thank you. We have way too many initials, as you know, in education. You know, several of them mentioned those, that they hated to lose those because they were great to help fill in where needed. But if you don't mind, I'm going to ask the brilliant, yeah, you, Roy, Roy Garcia, because he works daily with those principals and APs if there's something else he could add.
Well, I think y'all did a great job of kind of just explaining why, the why behind the recommendation. And as Teresa said, at the high school, you do have a little bit more flexibility with staffing. But I think the principals focused on those areas, as Dr. Henry and Teresa both mentioned, but they tried to find areas that would benefit all of those areas. And that's where the additional allocation for the option of a testing coordinator, behavior interventionist at the elementary and middle school came about, because they do feel that that is going to, that's going to make the teacher's role in that classroom more positive as well. And that is going to help teacher morale and that is going to help the culture and the climate of the campus. So that's where that additional allocation, and yes, we've talked about the flexibility, but you know this, we've got 93 campuses and none of them are exactly alike. So you give that leader of that small city the opportunity to make that determination on what they need for their, their population that they serve each day. So that's a little bit more about the why on that how that. I know there are some things that haven't been mentioned, but even if it is at the elementary and the middle school that you've got an additional person to help out, it's going to free up the assistant principal a little bit more. It's going to free up the counselor a little bit more from some of the testing duties or non-counselor related duties that will give them the opportunity to, again, enhance that entire climate, that entire school. And it goes back, they mentioned several times, about we feel a larger raise is going to help the teacher in the classroom, but so are these positions because it's going to make it, you know, I'm going to step out on a limb and say teachers the last few years, like OMG, you know, what has happened in the classroom. But it will get us back to that where it was before and why they do what they do. And that's what the thought from the principal was from the very onset.
And I think that's the, that's a great summary of the balancing act, because to me, we're trying to reduce, that would be to try to get teachers a percentage more. But I understand there was a meeting even in the district, right? I mean, asking teachers the factors that make them stay in the profession or not, and it's not always money. So this idea of being able to have someone who is there to support the behavioral, I think I just had some conversations this week with teachers to see, you know, which one of those feels the most rewarding, because that's our point, is to honor those who are on the front line with the kids, all our campus-based staff, to Debbie's very eloquent point on that. But I think it's a great question Julie raised and I'm very open to this thought about which one would bring the most support so that our teachers feel fueled. Then I had another question about, I think this goes back to your retreat, Dr. Henry, this idea that we have this one little revenue source called ADA on the table. And even to these positions, if someone's heart is to do discipline, support the teachers and they can have the kids at school more, you know, that's really money on the table. The only money I see that's out there until, until we have the legislature act on our behalf. And so is there been initial discussion around factors or ways, or is that some of what's the summer discussion on the ADA?
No, we've, we've had some, we've had some pretty detailed discussions on how to improve ADA. We know at the high school level, our ADA went way down. Well, why did it go way down? Well, we no longer had some of the requirements for attendance to avoid semester test. I mean, let's just, bottom line is, that was one of the reasons that kids would show up for school. We've been very careful about that because we don't want someone to show up ill. But I can tell you, when, when you have that exemption on the line, kids show up to school because they don't want to take their semester test. So that, at the secondary level, that, that's a big part of it. And I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I think, not in SIFIR ISD, but across the state and country, after COVID, I think parents were just more willing to take a vacation during the school week, you know, just miss a week of school and go on vacation at another time. I think there was, there was more of that. So attendance didn't seem quite as important when you were online as you were in person. So again, Roy or Teresa, anything to add to that? Lynda, anybody?
I think you touched on that. That was one of the big areas that the high school principals mentioned, being able to bring back some of those incentives, again, the exemptions, like Dr. Henry said, not to restate that, but that's important. And when you have, whatever that number is, if it's three absences, five absences, whatever it is, it does entice the students to come to school. They also talked about tardies and, you know, being in, focus on instructional time, whatever that number of minutes is. We take a hard stand on tardies and just that expectation of, you know, we expect you to be on time, just as you would if you have a job and other things of that nature as well. So it's just, that was the area where the high school principals, and they even spent some time developing a plan while we were in that meeting and right after that meeting on what that would look like and what their recommendation would be.
That was actually their major topic of discussion. And as Roy said, by the end of that, by the end of that morning, I had a plan that they had already sent me with how they wanted to make sure that we were incentivizing attendance for exemptions and tardies as well.
Excellent information. Thank you.
Just say one thing, Dr. Blessing, one of the, one of the things that I've had to learn over 11 years here, coming from districts that were much smaller, it takes, I mean, you add one person at every campus, it's a big number. The beauty is, is when you have to make cuts, with the turnover we naturally have, it's not difficult to just not hire as many people back, if that makes sense. So adding is expensive, but cutting adds up, or not rehiring. You very seldom have to fire people because you have enough turnover to address that.
Even as you heard the beautiful diversity of the experiences of the new principals today, you can see they've done a lot of different things and grown from it and obviously grown to leadership.
So that's why I guess adding the testing coordinator, behavior interventionist doesn't worry me as much, because again, those people doing those jobs this year, they may be in the classroom next year if we don't have the money, so.
It's recruitment and retention plan.
Yeah.
I hear you. Okay, very good. And then I also just wanted to thank Dr. Macias. One of the questions that she knew I would have, and we got to have a great discussion during graduation around, you don't see in this budget reflected the intervention positions. Like we have struggling readers, we're waiting for the E O Y data to be summarized for us to see how many kids made progress and didn't make progress, how many are on grade level and their reading levels at the end of this year, because that is the main focus, is to make sure that's a civil right to meet literacy. And we know the middle of the year, we're catching up from COVID and we know that that was still a concern at the 20% level. But she did share with me, you know, different positions, a lot of the federal dollars and to the point that Teresa was making as whole, that it is, that is very differentially aligned according to the need of the economically disadvantaged data. But I definitely want to, I've asked for data to look at our E O Y reading levels and compare to the positions you could purchase with that in your federal dollars and then say what number of kids, like if I know I had four positions I could purchase for intervention and let's say they could see 20 people in a day or 30 people in a day, well, how does that five times 30, 180 kids that could be served compared to the actual number of students who are way below grade level or below grade level in reading or math on the campus? Can they literally meet the needs of those struggling students? That would be a place where I would be concerned that we hadn't covered in the budget, to have the flexibility to meet their local need, but do they really have enough at our most, our campuses with the most reading need or math need? And so that's data I look forward to having because that is, you know, that, that discussion versus discipline, but I do really believe, even at the RRR conference, the full session around discipline, people are looking for strategies to take, it's mental health and like you said, that those young, those beginnings of really getting those habits done. I think that's all the questions that I have. Thank you so much, very thoughtful answers.
Mr. Seripia.
Thank you, Tom. Great report, Karen. We had our discussions before. I love Julie's passion as well as Natalie, trying to find something from somewhere. And I know everybody's striving for that. I'm going to be calling up a couple of the guys up, so whoever's taking Deborah's spot and Chief Mendez and Mr. Powell also coming up in a second. One more percent is 9.1?
Eight point, it's about 8.45 million based on our current staffing levels now.
Right, okay. And what would that be, protection be for the fund balance after 23, 24?
It would be below four months.
Be below four months? Would that hurt our, our rating?
Yes, it very potentially could hurt our rating. What happens is if you're below what they consider the amount that they would recommend for you, and June 30 year ends, just as a reminder, need more months in fund balance than an August 31 year end, because it's longer before our tax collections start coming in. And so, but what will, what happens is they basically put you on what's called a watch list.
Right.
And they have six months to either take you off the watch list or lower your rating.
Right. The raise we gave last year, the 5% were, as my understanding, everybody didn't get that $1,000 stipend also, right?
The $1,000 stipend was for paraprofessional and hourly employees.
Okay. With everybody getting the $1,000 stipend across, that's where the kicker is for this year. As far as like, what numbers look low may not actually be as low because of the $1,000 stipend across the board.
So are you asking if we just did it like we did last year, would the effect be less? The answer is yes.
Right. The, when we did our 5%, last year, where did we get to as far as the low fund balance?
Well, it, it's a little different because of the fact that we have the stimulus funds.
That's right, that's the funds, right.
And so we were able to, I guess, we're postponing the deficit, so to speak.
Right.
But the deficit, when those stimulus funds are gone.
Will be in our face.
Will be reality.
Right.
And so we've been utilizing those stimulus funds to help offset the deficit.
Okay, thank you. The $92 that we started at for the substitute pay, now they're 110 with a degree, what are they are for the person coming on for associates?
For the what?
Somebody coming on with just an associate's degree?
Um.
You said it was 110 for the people coming on for a full degree?
That was, that was the teacher. I'll look, I've got that right here.
Eighteen dollars.
That was, that was the recommendation, $18 for every single category.
Level, okay.
So those at the lower level actually got higher percentage increases.
Excellent, okay. Thank you, Dr. Henry.
And you were asking the non-degreed teacher, what we have is degreed and non-degreed teacher. So the non-degreed teacher was at 84 and it would go up to 102.
Okay, so and like you said, y'all got the 18?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. Going to the behavioral interventions, Julie brought up something about, and so, you know, with Natalie's backing about moving numbers around, nobody takes it, we're not taking the severity of their importance of their job lightly at all, but trying to find something somewhere for the educators have it. What Julie brought up, I'm not using you for a burn or anything, a half, a half percent because I'm, I'm pushing for a full percent. So, but looking for some numbers to come up to be a little bit more on the, on the, on the raise, on the raise scale for the educators and stuff. So I like their passion. I think there's something there to be had about it. Thank you Natalie for also looking into that, too. Kind of catch 22, Dr. Henry said, the parameters set by the board are, are something that's coming, you know, when we set parameters, there's, they're going to act, the administration's going to act and it's something that, like again, not, something not in need, so. So Chief, can you, can you come up here for a second? And I know you've probably been asked hundreds of times about what's going on there in our state and our response time, you said, is under four minutes?
Yes, I didn't run the numbers for tonight, but our, my expectation is that for emergencies, our response time will be less than four minutes.
Right. We currently have a officer patrolling two elementaries, is that my understanding?
So the district is broken into six zones and within each zone, there's approximately seven to nine elementaries. And so there's an officer per zone, so one officer will take care of seven to nine elementaries.
Right, okay. Bringing up your staff, where are you at right now on your numbers?
So we were fully staffed a few months ago, but we had two retirements today. Two of our officers retired and then we have a couple of officers that have left our department. So out of 110, I think we're at 106.
106.
106 or 104, one of those two.
So when you say four officers would be nice, would that make it 114 or back to 110?
114.
114.
We're still going to fill the vacancy and we currently, well, July 1, when the new budget goes into effect, we will start our active recruitment process where I send out our training sergeant and a team of officers and we go to police academies across the state. So I'll send a team to El Paso and we'll go to an academy and we'll spend two or three days there, test cadets that want to move to the Houston area, test them, interview them, do everything we have to do there so that they're not having to commute back and forth to the Houston area. So they only have to come here one time and that's when they do their job acceptance.
Good, good idea. Are the, are your officers getting enough training? Are they, you know, the scrutiny coming on the other departments in the state and everything else? I'm assured that they are. I've visited your, your place there and I, I'm amazed how y'all do things. I've visited your, your place there, and I, I'm amazed how y'all do things, but are they getting enough training, are you getting enough sufficient funds to do the training?
So I'm a big proponent of training. The state of Texas, under T. Cole, requires that police officers do 40 hours of training every training cycle. A training cycle is two years long, so the requirement is 40 hours. We do somewhere in excess of 200 hours of training per, per officer in a training cycle. So I mandate that the officers go through two weeks of summer training currently, and so within that training, we will cover various topics, and I know that the hot topic right now is people are concerned about active shooter. We will do active shooter refresher courses this summer, as well as other trainings that we need to do to ensure that we are prepared in the event of an emergency.
Right. There's one, one more question. If Roy was here, because he's answered this question before, but of course, for our viewing audience and maybe for some of the new ones, our objective is to stop the, the person from entering.
So, yes, sir, with the layers that we have put in through the different bonds with the, the security vestibules, the bullet resistant glass, the card access and controls in the academic areas, the segmentation that is now taking place at the elementaries, and I think if I'm not mistaken, and Jesse informed me earlier, I wanted to confirm, I think we have about 23 campuses that we've already done the segmentation to, and they'll continue to do segmentation this summer and next summer so that we get it done. And for those that don't know, our open campus concept is going to go to more of a closed campus, but still have the open campus fill. So we'll take a pod of four to eight classrooms, and they'll still have an open concept, but they will have walls and doors to keep them secured if we have to go into a lockdown. And so you have the front doors, the glazing, the mantraps, or the security vestibules, the academic hallways with the doors, the segmentation, the fencing of our playgrounds, the 3900-plus security cameras that we have, and then our officers who are trained in the events of an active shooter on how to respond.
And our doors, are they special doors for entry throughout the campus? Are they specially situated doors? I, I know the answer, but can you elaborate on that?
So we do have card access controls for our doors, and even the front doors, if a parent, a visitor, a vendor, whoever shows up to the campus does have to go and buzz in, they're seen on a, on a camera system. The receptionist is able to see them and identify them and let them into the mantrap. From there, they're able to do a visual inspection of the individual that's coming into the campus, even when you come into the reception area. We've hardened the reception area, and we have put up reception desks and put up additional bullet resistant windows, and we have secure doors from even the receptionist area while we ID you and run your system, your ID card through the Raptor system. So there's a lot of layers that we put into place, not to mention the layers that don't even have to do with the campus. Anytime that there's a social media threat in the evening hours, overnight hours, it's not uncommon for our officers at 9:00, 10:00, 11:00, 2:00 in the morning to go knock at a door and wake parents up and wake students up to investigate any kind of threat that comes out on social media. We want to address anything that could affect the campus before it ever gets to the campus.
Exactly. I, go ahead.
One, one thing, Chief, just, just describe the door prop alarm since you're talking about...
Yeah, I felt to mention that. So we are, with the last bond, we have been doing the door prop alarms, and so all the doors on a campus will have, through the contacts, have a communication back to the alarm panel. If a door that has been designated as an emergency exit only, or a door that's not commonly used at the campus, it has a prop alarm. So if it is propped open for a designated period of time, you have to forgive me, I don't remember what the time is right this second, but if it's open for any length of time, the alarm panel in the front office will alarm and will not turn off until the door is closed, or until it's investigated to determine why the door is open. So we're doing that for a majority of the doors. All the high schools are done, and we plan on going, we plan on going live with the high schools this coming school year. We already have created and are working through our training with our front end receptionists, with our office staff that are going to be there where the alarms will sound. They're trained on the camera system so that when the prop alarm goes off, they're able to look at the camera system and immediately look at the camera that looks at the door. So there's, you know, it's, we're trying to do things in a split second so that they can immediately identify if there's a, a problem at the door. And then the middle schools are being done, and they're being phased in partly with the construction that's taking place with the bond work. So I think we have, if I remember, I think we have four middle schools that are currently done, and we have about 13 elementaries that have been done. But the high schools are all done, and we'll roll that out this school year.
Thank you for your answer. A lot of that was started, I believe, with the 14 bond election, is that, that right?
That's correct.
And then the one that Julie, you spearheaded on the, no, the one, the second one. Yeah, the second one, the second one there, yeah. So I appreciate that. I know a lot of this is for the viewing audience and stuff, and there's been a lot of, a lot of Hail Marys and Our Fathers lately, so thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Can I have, can I have Ife?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of course, Ms., Moonakai is one of my favorite people, and for the discipline issue that you see around the district, as I stated in the last board we had, it, I'm quite aware of what it is going on, and not to put any, downplay anything in need of a, the interventionist and stuff. Can, do, do you see a bright side? I'm like Mark, I see a bright side all the time. I'm hoping the following year would be better. I'm, I'm hoping with a year of everybody being back together that we're on a brighter time, but I'm, want to ask you, you're the, the lead, and I appreciate Roy going to the principals and getting it straight from them also, but what, what are your feelings about that?
Good evening. I certainly agree with the comments that have been made this evening. I do see a bright side. We've been working very closely with our principals. Each campus has their unique needs regarding student discipline. So what we've done this year is we've, you know, we, we try to tailor our support. What we provide is support and guidance. The principals ultimately make the final decision regarding discipline, and, you know, we support and guide them. I do see a bright side. We started out, as Dr. Henry shared, wanting to keep our students in school and do whatever possible because they had been out of school for a couple of years. And once we realized that we needed to reteach again, and it seemed that they were disconnected with the rules and the guidelines of just school, and that was causing the disruption. So we've made some, some headway. It's been a collaborative effort. We're very hopeful for next year. As Dr. Henry shared, when we come back next year, you know, we'll be ready.
Well, thank you, Ife. Those words are quite reassuring and heartfelt, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Powell, you're still on the job, another 30 days, maybe, a couple of weeks. Summer meals, going out to the kids, are those going to be fully funded? Are they breakfast, lunch, dinners? What are they, and are we going to be ready for those?
We are ready, excuse me, we're already, we've already started serving. But to answer the, the first part of the question, are they fully funded? The waivers that we received previously during COVID went away, or they go away June 30th. But we have received, Darren and his team, Suzie have done an amazing job working with the Texas Department of Agriculture and getting some additional waivers and funding for our summer programs, adding them to our CEP programs. So we are getting those fully funded. Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, are any of the programs not being funded?
And so we do have, we do have currently a couple of schools that will not be fully funded, and basically those are schools that don't qualify because of the level of economically disadvantaged students in those attendance zones. The waivers that we've had, Bill alluded to, the last couple of years have allowed us to waive area eligibility. We can't do that right now. We were able, because they have a couple of different ways we can qualify them, so we did have a couple that we thought would not qualify, that we did find a way to qualify. But unfortunately, those waivers that were under, they do expire on June 30th or at the end of school. So in our case, we really can't extend those waivers past when actual school ended. But we were able to find ways to get most of them fully funded. We do have a few, though, that are in areas that there's just no way to demonstrate economic disadvantage.
Is, is that a need that we might, we have to consider to add in our budget here to make sure that the kids are, are safe and fed?
So what we are really trying to do is focus on the areas where we have that demonstrated need, and we can get it funded through there. With students who do have a demonstrated need, even if they are out of school that is not fully funded, if their parents fill out an application.
Okay.
And qualify for free meals or reduced meals, we're still able to offer those meals at that school. It's just students really in areas where there's not a high enough demonstrated level of economically disadvantaged students. And specifically, students there who are not economically disadvantaged. But anyone who can demonstrate that need, we're more than happy to process their applications. We do those 12 months a year, so that any student who needs it, we're going to take care of.
And, and that's for breakfast and lunch, or what, what is that?
That is for breakfast and lunch. We don't currently offer any supper programs in the summertime, but we do offer breakfast and lunch. Right now, we're focusing on all of our campuses where we have some other program going on. Because historically, summer feeding is something that doesn't always generate sufficient revenue to cover the costs.
Right.
You know, we were fortunate the past couple of years where we have those waivers, so it was, it made financial sense to do that, but we're really focusing on the area where we're going to have kids, and make sure that we have those open, and on those where they are funded, not only are they open to students who are attending summer school, but they're open also to any other students, really anyone 18 or under that wants to go and take a meal.
Exactly, that's what I wanted to get at there.
Okay.
Thank you, two gentlemen and stuff. Y'all have done wonders, and your staff through the last two years, and getting everybody in there and always having something for them to make sure that they were taken care of. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The $12 an hour for the, that's, was a concern, we had talked about that, I think Scott brought that up. Also, I, too, would like to see something added there, where we get it from. I'm like Julie, I'm, I'm praying and hoping that we can find something there. Not that, I just want to do more. So hopefully, we can get that done before we come for a vote. So I already asked you about the fund balance, what that's going to generate here. I would like a response, if not tonight, just sometime over the weekend, if you get the other 1% hit, that I, I want to see the numbers on that, you can just send it to me.
Okay.
You talking about a 1% pay raise?
1% above, making it 3%.
Okay, every 1% is 8.4 million?
Is 8.45 million.
Right, right. So, and I would just like to see the, it may not look good, but I, I just need to see what the forecast is for the fund balance.
If, well, I mean, you would have to, I guess, because basically what we have recommended at this point in time is the, the 2%, okay, and plus the stipend.
Right.
If you do, so did you say you're wanting an additional percent?
Well, and, and what I'm talking about is an additional percent, making it three, plus the stipend, but that 1%, like Julie was talking about, maybe grabbing from somewhere and, and getting something from something else, and, and hopefully making it work an extra, making it 3% with the stipend.
And I actually have that information here, Gilbert. A 3% raise, plus the stipend, plus the behavioral interventionist, and the starting teacher salary of $60,500, basically, I guess you could say in '22, '23, because of the stimulus funds, it, it will have a little less in fund balance, where it would have been about 5.28 months in fund balance, and it would go down to 5.23 at the end of '22, '23. However, with the 3% raise and those other costs still in there, in '23, '24, we would go below four months.
Yes. And the, thank you, Karen. Roy, when you, when you were going, talking with the principals, and, and again, not downplaying their, their need for sufficient help in areas that, of need, so the interventionist slash, what was that?
Testing coordinator.
Testing coordinator. And I, I heard what you said, you know, making life easier for them. I had a conversation with my kids today, and, and by no means are we, are we starving. I'm not saying that. But there are families out there that may not be in our realm, that meals are hard to come by. And there was the question, that's why I was asking Bill and Darren, and, and for some teachers or educators, that, that, that may make them more comfortable in, in the classroom by having help, but I'm concerned with what's getting put on the table at home. And it doesn't, doesn't mean any less that way, but I'm, I'm aiming at that. That's my, that's my point, so. Again, like Tom says, it's always good to come towards the end because all you guys have passion throughout, and you get to hear all the different stuff, starting with Lucas. I was like, oh, gee, I was going to say that, ask that, too, and, and you guys brought things up, too. So I love you guys and everything else. I know the decisions are not easy, and I'm not trying to make less than anybody's jobs what they are already and stuff, but tough questions, though. Thank you, guys. Go ahead, Tom.
Good discussion. So a couple of observations. When Mr. Henry asked the question, have we had budget cuts before, for the viewing audience, he already knew that answer, but it's always important to refresh and go over those things that the board may know. For the viewing audience, I was a citizen who chaired a committee to come up with the budget cuts, and I stood right there and recommended budget cuts to the board at that time, and I definitely heard from other citizenry regarding the recommendations of my committee. What did we do? We cut every stipend offered by the school district, 100%. That wasn't easy. We reduced cleanliness expenditures across the entire district. We reduced, and that was inside the building, that was also outside the building. What were some of the other changes that we made? We requested that the state legislature consider a waiver program to permit more children in the classroom than were permitted by law. The state legislature, we spearheaded that request, and the state legislature passed it. And of course, as a trustee now, I never planned to be a trustee, but of course, whenever we talk about waivers, I, I remember standing at that podium. We permitted class sizes at the high school level to increase. At that time, we were the least funded of any major school district. Our teachers handled about five more students per class. We recommended reduction of planning periods. We also, at that time, spent approximately $10 million a year more than the state requirement for special needs children. We cut that $10 million a year out. In addition, we had a self-funded insurance program that was... In addition, we had a self-funded insurance program that was the envy of the state. It was a Cadillac insurance program for our teachers. My first year as a trustee, I noted that we ran a $10 million deficit. The second year, we ran a $20 million deficit. And I requested a change from the insurance program, and we went to TRS. So those are some of the decisions that the people who came before us had to make, and some of the ones that I had to participate in making. We run roughly a 10% turnover, which is significantly below and always has been the state average. It's a little higher now, but still in that neighborhood. Karen, if we use 10% as a turnover, how much in payroll cost would be dropped just as a result of turnover without replacement? So for the, for the proposed budget, how big of a number would that be?
And I was trying to, we probably have about how many teachers, I think, is it about 1,000 teachers we fill?
Well, just, just 10% of the, the budget for, that we spend on salaries and benefits would be about $100 million. Yeah. No, I think you said all employees, right? Because turnover, if 10% would be all employees.
You know, so this district, both when I was a citizen for over three years sitting in the back watching, has always looked to reduce staff through what's called attrition as opposed to laying off staff. And I would suspect senior management would lean in that direction if we had to do it. Something that Mr. Henry made a comment, and Dr. Henry answered, and the question was, was timely. The answer was correct, specific to the question, but it's a little broader than that. And so the way that I would answer your question, Mr. Henry, your question was the impact. When would the impact, if there was increased revenue, be felt? And I would suggest that the impact has to, on our representatives and senators in Austin, our impact on them really has to get started now. It takes a long time to sell an idea. And we can't wait until they're back in session to try and convince them. Because if we do, quite frankly, it's too late. They're already focused, as they should be, on the business at hand. And so if we think we have a need, now is truly the time to start having those conversations. We have to be convincing, and it will take more than one conversation. But I will tell you that we had about a four-year conversation with the man who became lieutenant governor. And he, we were able to persuade him to adjust the funding for the school district. And he did so. And it was beneficial. But it takes time to create that relationship, and then it takes time to try and make your point happen. We aren't crying wolf, not time for a clarion call, but it is time to have that very real discussion. Now, back to your question and comment, Mr. Scanlon, on the budget. So as a predicate, you know my rough background. I also was a member of adjunct faculty at a university here in the greater Houston area. And the course I taught, oddly enough, dealt with budgeting. They called it controllership, but it was a fancy name for budgeting. What I taught at that time is, as a general rule, your minimum that you needed was three months of operating reserves, golden rule, six months. And it would vary from industry to industry. Oil and gas had very specific capital-intensive requirements. Manufacturing really needed that, that solid operating cash on hand. That wasn't a savings account. It was merely that the cash would come in, the cash would go out, and then you had further complexities. The business of public education is much the same. I will note to the viewing audience, and I know any of the number of the administrators, and those of us who have years in education are well aware. There was a school district in our general part of the state of Texas that was taken over by the state of Texas, and one of the reasons was because their fund balance was below three months. There are only two reasons why they, why they took it over. And reason number one is they were financially and fiscally irresponsible, and the evidence of it was fund balance was below three months. And even after that school district got back up to the three-month mark, the state of Texas said, "Sorry, Charlie, we can't trust you. We don't know that you can keep it at that level." And that school district went out of existence. To this day, it does not exist, except in, you know, the history of that community. So the state of Texas means business. When they talk about a minimum fund balance of three months, the four months is very real. I have said before, before this microphone, and I said this last year, I would vote against any financial action that we took that dropped us below that line. And, and it's not because I wouldn't want us to make decisions for the benefit of staff of this district. But 2/3 of our rooftops have no children. So actually, the vast majority of our rooftops are more fiscally invested as opposed to having children in the district. And as a trustee, we have to wear all kinds of different hats. So hopefully, that was, those were the additional comments that you wanted me to address, Mr. Scanlon. You know, we were, we were talking about our custodial staff. And one of the recommendations that I made to this board, or the predecessor board, and I apologize at least every other year, was to cut custodial staff. Our custodial staff then had the largest per-square-footage cleaning area of any custodial staff of any major district. So I'm very sensitive to it, but have to put on a different hat. So the Houston Chronicle reported that the Union for Janitors just executed a new contract. I believe it's a two-year contract. The question that I have for you, Karen, is, will our raises that we're talking about for our custodians be competitive with what that union approved?
Yes, the union basically went from a starting salary of $10.75, and ours is at $10.80. And they recommended a minimum of a dollar per hour increase. And our, our increase would be $1.20. So I guess we would be kind of within that range that you're referring to, Mr. Jackson.
So we're competitive, and if anything, slightly above?
I would say we're, yes, we're definitely competitive.
That brings the, the other question. My rookie year as a trustee, I asked a question, and let me tell you, I heard about it from the teacher groups. I had too much of my CPA hat on. We were talking about raises, and so I raised the question, were we getting into an arms race? And of course, the teacher groups did not appreciate my, my asking that question. But from a fiscal perspective, I think it's important to ask, because we don't want to give a raise that we do not believe is sustainable. And so I've, I've shifted my vocabulary. I've, I've learned over the years that I have to use different vocabulary when I talk about sensitive topics. And so I now talk about sustainable raises. But I see the raises are going up across the board. And I also see that general employment is great, is actually greater than what's called full employment. So, so one, we've already addressed the sustainability. You have told us that we are not sustainable on the raise. That we have federal funds that covers us for two years, but after that, we are not sustainable.
That's correct.
Does that enter into the reason why senior management is suggesting a 2% and $1,000 stipend, as opposed to just a 4% raise with zero stipend? Or a 3% raise at $1,000 stipend, with that $1,000 actually equaling two percentage points? So is that some of the, some of the rationale? And if not, correct me, or I'm wrong.
Absolutely, you're right on target, Mr. Jackson. And the reason why is because, as you well know, the raise is ongoing from every year. And the stipend is, that we're recommending is just for the '22, '23 year. So that one is more of a one-time expenditure versus ongoing.
So one potential way that we had, if we had to cut without getting rid of positions, is we do not affirm that stipend going forth.
Yes, sir.
So in two years out, if we don't have relief from the state, we would, we could take the position, we are not affirming a stipend for that following year.
Yes, sir.
And, and that would keep all, all positions on hand. One of the other areas where we had a staff reduction that I had to recommend was the size of our maintenance staff. And after I became a trustee, I had to, and I did go out, and I apologized to our maintenance staff, because they then had to do more work for basically the same pay. So some of these choices we make are not, I think they're the, the right choice, but not necessarily always the most pleasant choice. Back to the question of providing additional resources at the elementary and middle school level. As a board, we are blessed, because we have a management team that will be very responsive to what we say. The bad news is, as a board, we have a management team that is very responsive to what we say. And we gave guidance at the last board meeting, and management went out with that guidance to come up with a plan to be responsive to what the board's consensus was. And so, and this is not really for the viewing audience, this is just for, and it's not even for Dr. Henry. This is really just for the seven of us. So, so the rest of y'all, you don't have to listen. But, but as a board, we have to be very careful that we don't continue to, to make changes with direction that we give to senior management. It's a big district, but we want senior management to be very thoughtful and also responsive. So we can tweak it a little bit. My recommendation to the seven of us, yeah, we might be able to tweak it a little bit, but if we're asking senior management to go in this direction, one month, one board meeting later, we really, it's kind of hard for us to say, no, we changed our mind, we want to go this way. And, and as a, a board, that is difficult to get our arms around. But, but it is something that is a challenge for all boards to do. If senior management wasn't so responsive, we wouldn't have this issue. But we do. That's not to say that I did not hear my colleagues be very forceful and say, isn't there another way that we can come up with more money to put into the classroom? The decision that I came to the board when I stood out there as a citizen is we cut everything outside the classroom. And we made, we made some significant cuts, and the cuts hurt. But, but at the end of the day, we said, no rollback on teacher salaries. But we did punish teachers with five more students, high school level, 30 more students in a day, five days a week. So I apologize, I spent more time with my comments than I did asking my questions. I do want to say thank you to my colleagues. The questions that you asked offline were on target. They were the questions I would have asked, and I was tickled to sit back and watch you all go in and ask the questions that needed to be asked. And I just want to say thank you, it was, it was a job well done. Now, for the second go-around, let me turn to the left. None from the left, let's go back to the right, Mr. Henry. Dr. Blassinger.
I do have another question, and not a very popular one, in the very room of the very people in the room. I have been the person sitting in the room with that same conversation. I'm not sure it would make a big difference, because frankly, I'm unapologetic for retaining recruiting quality staff, learning loss and student discipline being our board priorities. I think they're absolutely the issues we're concerned with, to make sure that we can keep quality staff and make sure our students are being schooled as they need to. Of course, everything has priorities and has, decisions have to be made. And I feel like, like you said, Mr. Jackson, Mr. President, incredible conversation. I have listened to each colleague, and I have adjusted my thinking, and am willing to adjust my thinking along the way, because I feel like everyone's bringing up incredible points. To that, I don't think it can make enough difference possibly, but I'm thinking about Gilbert's comment about the people at $12 an hour who literally are struggling to buy meat, because meat doubled in price, you know, to feed their family. And so I have been a district administrator, and I have not received a raise, because I have, they have done raises, maybe at teachers and below. So if I look at this page about the average percent increase, have you done any math, Karen, on if the general and instructional administration and executive leadership did not get a 2% raise or $1,000, because the margins of life aren't quite as impactful to them? What kind of savings that might be that could go towards some other piece of the puzzle?
I did look at, actually, the executive leadership group. I realize my mic wasn't on, apologize. And it would free up about $85,000.
I knew we're very lean in our administration, so I wasn't looking for large numbers. But what about the general and instructional administration?
I do have that, just a moment. Okay, here it is, let's see. And I'm just looking, let's see, it would be, if I add it in, it'd be about another, let's see, about another $2 million.
So that total is?
Well, it'd be about two, about $2 million that we would free up total.
What I'm learning tonight is how fast Dr. Henry is with math. Thank you so much. Okay, that was my last question, thank you.
Just to make a comment on that, you can leave me.
Just to make a comment on that, you can leave me off of that, but there's no way I'd make a recommendation that other leadership across this district don't receive a raise because they've been in the line of fire as much or more than anybody the last two years. But you can leave me out.
I don't think, I think the point was to make sure and ask the question and the savings don't look great. And that was my point, a lean administration doesn't bring large changes.
I just want the public to understand the pressure these leaders have been under and in all honesty, the stress, sometimes the abuse, and certainly the difficult days they've had since March of 2020.
And Natalie, what you'll see too is when, as far as when we adopt the budget by function, typically what it's been, general administration is about 1.8% of total cost.
And that's what I was, I know that we've set a percentage at less than across the whole state, right? Some of the lowest administrative.
We have one of the lowest administrative cost ratios across.
And highest quality administrative staff.
Absolutely.
An unbiased opinion, a factual opinion. And so, thank you very much.
Actually anticipated your question.
As you always do.
Do you have other questions, Dr. Blessing?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Srabia.
So it was going to be for Deborah, but whoever can answer this, the 76 positions that we're looking to add, are they coming from in-house or are we outside looking to get someone specializing in that title there or something?
I think it would be a combo for behavior.
We typically offer our positions. Make them available to others outside of the district, but we really do look to promote inside or give opportunities to those teachers that possibly have the skill set to meet those needs. So we're going to look definitely in-house first and then we would offer it externally as well.
And then just backfield those spots that are left open from the in-house movement?
That would create a vacancy if we did transition someone into those positions.
Excellent. And then I asked that question, of course, to Deborah, almost like every third board meeting on our vacancies right now, are we looking good? I know we're looking far and beyond and everything else, but we're fighting just like anybody else for the best that we can, we can get to come to our district, a district of destination and stuff. What we're looking at like right now, like every year, I know, you know, we're out there trying our best, so.
We are still looking for teachers. We have hired almost 700 teachers at this point, but we still have quite a few more teachers to hire, just like all the school districts across the state. People are leaving the education, they are leaving the profession and transitioning. And so normally, we typically have some turnover in our district, but we are seeing just like the other districts, turnover.
The number you just said, 700, is that within what the last couple of years have been like or substantially higher?
We have had an increase in the number of resignations. We have, we're probably up about 20% in our number of resignations.
I get those questions asked from me from outside all the time. And like we just did with the naming of the new principals and the new assistant superintendent, and I told Mark and Julie this, during the break, we had to believe in next person, give that opportunity to the next person and wish everybody the best as they seek their new chapters and safe tidings and stuff. But we have to believe in ourselves and the district as a whole that, yes, next batter up, we're going to be, we're going to keep, you know, trucking along there. And I was fortunate to talk to Ms. Postma, Ms. Palain, and were the people that were named tonight with outstanding resumes. I think Natalie said, my God, the pedigrees here are outstanding. And yes, they are. And the mentorship that they got and the mentoring that Roy and the admin has set up throughout. And I, Ms. Palain said, yes, we had great mentoring too. Mr. Labai was teaching, was showing us the mentoring as well when they were young. So I believe in the district. I just wanted to hear what the process was going to be and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you.
A couple of closing comments. We talked about security on campus. As a district, we've poured over $200 million into security. One item we did not talk about when I was doing a school visit, and it was purposely planned in this fashion, obviously pre-COVID. I was on campus when the campus had a active shooter drill. The students and teachers did not know that, the students did not know that there was not an active shooter on campus. The response was immediate. I was there, I saw it in action. It was both impressive and terrifying all at the same time. When we talk about the state of Texas rainy day fund, it is not because the price of gasoline goes up. The donation of gasoline is on a fixed amount. It is because oil and natural gas production goes up. Just wanted to make that observation for the viewing public. The, you know, you can take the boy out of being a CPA, but you can't take the CPA out of the boy, right? I would never support not giving campus leadership and senior management the raise as required. Certainly, Dr. Henry can do what he wishes, but I think it sends the wrong message that we would take money away from leadership to give to another group. This district, since I was a citizen and as a trustee, has always tried to have a even hand across the board, trying to treat all as evenly as possible. And I think it sends a wrong message and seriously could damage the culture of this district. I would definitely vote against such a proposal. But I only have one vote and can easily be outvoted. So having said that, I think we have exhausted the viewing audience with our questions and comments. And I think our board has finished with questions and comments. Dr. Henry, do you have comments?
Yeah, I just, just, we've got to synthesize things a little bit here tonight because we have to come to you on Monday with a proposal and it's got to be by function. Here's a little idea after hearing Dr. Blessing and others speak, and this is something that we've done in the past. We could raise that hourly to $12 like we have as we try to figure out the pay scales. But in the past, for non-professional positions, we've given a little higher raise. So I would propose to this board, and I don't know what it would cost exactly for non, for our hourly folks, that we go 3% and then stick with the 2% and the $1,000 for others and 3% and $1,000 for the hourly folks. So that helps a little bit. I know that won't be quite as big a number as it would be for 1% for everyone. And I think that takes into account the group that y'all are worried about with inflation. So that would be my recommendation. And, you know, on the others, the elementary, middle behavioral interventionist testing coordinator, we can go either way on that. Again, we were trying, as you said, Tom, to approach this as what the board, the board had the three concerns, so we did it there. But I would, and I know I don't want to drag this out any longer we have to either, but come to some consensus on what you want us to bring back to you on Monday. And that's kind of a proposal that maybe answers some of it.
And you are correct, and that's, this is where we need to be. And of course, having discussions out in the public always makes it a little more difficult. So we can't go in the room back there and huddle around and say, what do you think? What do you think about this? So we get to talk about it in public. And so there's really, Mark has put two ideas forth, one which is a smaller dollar idea for hourly employees giving a slightly higher raise. The question is, would, and we had really a majority of the board talk about more money going into that category. Would y'all find that satisfactory as something that, in the great scheme of things, that you could support? Comments, nods? Yes, ma'am?
I feel very supportive. I would want there to be a look at the non-hourly but lowest paid paraprofessional positions.
That's hourly and par.
Yes, because those people would outpace that and that's working for wages and that would be great to look. Thank you, very great. Yes, I would be very supportive of such an item.
Gilbert, any thoughts? And by the way, board members don't feel like that you have to speak up, right? But if you have comments, please do so. Gilbert?
Looking at the raise with the stipend, we're looking at 3.9 across, according to the numbers you had set earlier on the board.
The 3.9 is the teacher, average teacher raise with the 2% and the $1,000 stipend.
Right, okay. I wish I had the answer. I was going to pass a note to one of my colleagues looking at a 2.5 raise with a $1,250 stipend, which would basically come out to a 4.75 raise.
With the additional costs that are in there, in '23, '24, we would be below four months.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm looking at getting the monies, not just in addition to what we have there, but like one of my colleagues had said, looking at one of the other places where we can draw some money from, so.
Are you referring to the behavioral interventionists? Is that what you're saying?
That's probably the only place that you could draw that additional money from. Most everything else on here, if you go with the 2%, everything else is really, you have to do it.
Yeah, I'm through, Tom, go ahead. I think Debbie has something.
I'll wait to be recognized by the chair.
So let's, once we get started, Mr. Scanlon, comments, observations, questions?
I'm supportive of the notion, but I'd like to understand the cost affiliated with the, for our hourly workers, the 3% raise plus the stipend. I'd like to understand that before I comment on it.
Yes, and we would have to ask human resources to calculate that for us because there's various hourly rates, so.
We could have that information to you probably by Monday morning.
That's fine.
You know, before the board meeting.
Yep.
But if I don't know the cost, I won't be able to come up with a by-function.
Well, I know, but I'm figuring you and H R between now and noon on Monday can write, Sharita. She got thumbs up. Once she comes on.
Yeah, we could get through the cost, but I may not have the budget in the manner we need to adopt it.
Oh, I got you.
Because basically, we have to go through and flow it through the entire system to get that information. It takes us two to three days.
Well, Mr. Scanlon, I'm going to take an educated guess on here. It's going to be $3 million or less. And the reason I say that is 1% for everybody is 8.45 million. And your higher-paid employees generally are your teachers, administrators and professionals. So it's going to be less than half of that 4 million.
Okay. In that context, and I'm very good with swag, I do those in business all the time, so.
I agree with you.
So I'm still supportive. But with that comment, I want to address the elementary and middle school interventionist testing coordinator. So from my perspective, this past year, A, we listened to the people that are on the ground, boots on the ground, dealing with a problem. What makes it better? When I look at that number, I don't just see 6 million, what I see is school culture. And I see better outcomes for kids in class and less frustration among teachers. And, you know, when I've spoken to teachers, what I hear is, the priority that I've heard is, it's more about the school culture and the quality of life in the classroom and the ability to deliver their curriculum than it is about the money. So I want to stress for my colleagues, at least my perspective, that if we're really seeking, hold on, I don't want to frame it that way. The value that we get from investing in an improved classroom management culture and work culture and frankly, student, you know, quality of life for the teachers, the value that we're going to provide the teachers there, in my viewpoint, not taking anything away from pay and take home and those things, I get it. But I think that difference is going to have more value than the additional whatever monies we might spread around with that 6 million. So, yeah, I don't have any more comments there. I only have one last general comment in that on Monday evening, just I want to say it publicly, I will not be able to be here. And so I will make sure that I put in my information to President Jackson, but I've tried to make sure that, as we all have, we've all participated in this process, we take it very seriously. And so please do not mark my absence as any degree of non-commitment, that's absolutely not true. But I will not be able to be here, but I will read all my information and share my thoughts with Dr. Jackson or Mr. Jackson.
Further comments, questions, Mr. Scanlon? Thank you.
And there's a chance, Mr. Scanlon, we may still be here on Monday, so I'm just letting you know that.
That's my fear. I've got it plugged in.
Well, we do have pages of board agendas still get through tonight. Ms. Blackshear?
You know, I am always in favor of paying our employees the most we can. But I tend to agree with what Mr. Scanlon said about the behavioral interventionists, having visited schools, having been a reader and a volunteer in schools and seeing the frustrations that teachers face and as Mr. Scanlon said, talking to teachers, who are the boots on the ground. So I think whatever we can do to reinforce that, I think many teachers will see as a big benefit and I believe will serve to make life better for their students and for them as well. You know, I've seen the behavioral interventionists at an elementary school, how that worked several times and have seen the benefit. And I think those would be dollars well spent.
Ms. Heinemann?
Thank you, I appreciate the input from my colleagues and I would absolutely support that as well. I do have a concern, just in terms of the ability to fill those positions, and if they are filled with teachers, then our abilities to now fill these open teacher positions when we already have so many open teacher positions as it is now. So we may be creating another challenge, more open positions. But that's okay. I mean, the intent behind it is absolutely valid and I support the intent behind that position and that budget line item. I would also like to ask my colleagues to consider adding the six additional officers to provide coverage, additional coverage for elementary school campuses and the two ALC campuses for the $412,000.
So Mark, I don't know that, I can tell you, we have a consensus.
Have you gone that way yet?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Didn't he? Maybe he didn't. No, he didn't.
We still have. We still have more to go. I will mention it at this point, as the microphone passes in front of me. What I mentioned at the last board meeting is, I also wanted senior management to come back to us, because this is your business, we're the trustees, as to how you would want to spend that money. And you assured me, when I chatted with you, that this is, in fact, how you would want to spend the money, and that you being the collective you. So, further comments? Mr. Henry?
Just another thought, again, adding another wriggleless Karen, to add to your twizzle things. For the hourly employees, as opposed to giving them the raise, like Mark had talked about, Dr. Henry talked about, maybe give them a $2,000 stipend instead. Might be easier to account for as opposed to the rates. Might be easier to finagle that number, just for the inflation cost. Might be easier to do very quickly and very easily. Might help for that.
Yeah, and I could give that to you in just a few minutes. I've got those numbers.
That might be something to look at. Add to the comments over there is, when I talk to teachers, their thing is time. They want to get back in the classroom, managing the classroom in time. They love the pay, but at the end of the day, it's about time, getting that classroom control back, so I kind of agree with the, to the comments we heard earlier, and I'm all for adding more police as well, so, but I'll get back to my time.
Dr. Blasen, yeah?
I support the police additions to get that response rate where it needs to go. And then, I feel like giving the team, Roy, the input that Teresa and the team got from the principals, with the, I think we collect data on this, and I do see it as a recruitment and retention tool, to Dr. Henry's point of getting some more people before we hit the deficit by the '23, '24 year as a way to, and so, I would say, let's, I would ask that we do data around this. We survey teachers for their satisfaction with the support. We put the training on. You share with us information about those roles and how they're being trained, which schools are choosing which one of the two roles. And we look at discipline data on an ongoing basis. I'd say every couple, every couple, three, two, three months as a board to see, is this making a difference? Do the teachers feel more supported in the classroom? And do the students get more discipline that is whole and makes them, you know, addresses mental health and other issues? And then, that way, when we come back the next year, because with the Esser dollars still lasting one more year, and then that's assuming 100% fill rate, it's almost like an opportunity we may never get in the near future to actually experiment with whether this can make a difference for teacher retention and satisfaction and student service and family service. And so, to me, the cost is worth the risk. And so, I would support those two issues. Thank you.
Mr. Henry, if I may just add real quickly, and this was based on the number of employees last year, what we budgeted for '21, '22 for an additional, for a $1,000 stipend for hourly and para-professional was 6.2 million. We have less than that right now, but obviously, you never know what you're gonna hire, but what we budgeted in the budget for '21, '22 was 6.2 million. Does that help you?
Yes, thank you.
Just to add on to Scott's question there, would we be allowed to use Esser dollars for that 6.2?
Yes, we would be allowed to use the, we would utilize it if you call it a recruitment and retention stipend. Obviously, if that is the case, you've got less to cover the deficit in the future, but yes, we could absolutely use Esser dollars for that.
Any thanks for the Dr. Blasen game.
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Serabia?
I like Tom's statement, the last one. Of course, we make our suggestions and everything else, but you are, you're professionals. This is your realm, this is your business, your knowledge. You've gotten us here so far, so I heard Mark here say a second ago, hey, maybe we can do this. I'm not gonna rock the boat or anything, but I just trying to do our best and stuff like that, and I trust the admin, because you guys have led us to great places already, so.
And I want to say this upfront, I think Scott's idea was an excellent idea.
I do, too.
Because it's a one-time cost, and I have had conversations with our teacher and employee union leadership, and a stipend makes a big difference to those hourly, and because it's lump, you get enough money to pay off something, so I'm not opposed to that at all, if that's a direction y'all want to go. I think it's a great idea.
I agree with that, and Tom said it's raining. I believe it's raining, and I have to go to restroom.
You know, so it's always interesting to be in this position, because I cannot call for a vote, right? I know that my anecdotal observations and small sample size, but teachers who left during the COVID period, they were happy to take fewer dollars to go to a different environment. So, I'm not certain that more money, more money is always nice, right? But I don't know that more money is always the answer. I still think that at our last board meeting, when as a consensus, we suggested driving more resources into the discipline area, and management came back with a proposal, I still find that easy to support. I also said that I would support small tweaks. Mr. Henry suggested one. You know, with respect to our police force, the first priority is obviously getting back to being fully staffed with positions. There's a shortage of peace officers as well. They're leaving that profession as well. I think, when I chatted about the arms race, Ms. Heineman pointed out, part of the arms race is that classroom teachers may decide to go for a different position that's been created, which then leaves that classroom position open. Dr. Blasen game also pointed out, that's the other part of the arms race, is you deplete your classroom resources. I think, and here's the difficult part, Mark, I think I've heard from a consensus, although a member of the consensus will not be a voting member, but I think we have consensus here to support the budget as proposed by management with small tweaks to gain additional support. Is that also what you think you heard?
Well, what I heard is, everything we presented here, plus the six police officers, plus possibly a stipend for our paras and hourly folks. Is that what I heard?
So, I think I have, I can tell you that...
An additional stipend, excuse me.
Correct. An additional stipend of some undiminished amount until you run the numbers. So, I think as a board, we would be supportive of that. May not be unanimous, but I think we, the board would be supportive of it.
And just to clarify, are you saying the, when you say the stipend, you're talking about the $1,000 that we've already got, and then for hourly and para, 2,000?
An additional stipend.
And like I said, that would be an additional, I would guess it's anywhere between, depending on our numbers, you know, like I said, we budgeted this year 6.2 million. It was a little less than that because we had less employees. So, I would say, you know, it could run anywhere between 5.9 million and probably 6.2 million, somewhere in that range.
And also, what I, the sense I had from the board is that we're not hard and fast on that. We're looking to management to come back with the size of that second stipend.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just want to be sure I understood.
Mr. President, I have a question?
Yes, sir.
In the event we cannot hire the middle school behavioral specialist and testing coordinators, depending on the way we code this, could this be reallocated to a full-time substitute for some of the principals who requested that money?
I'm not for sure the answer to that. I can tell you that a full-time substitute would be less expensive than a behavior intervention, an interventionalist, that's a hard word to say. But, I mean, I guess, and I'm gonna look, I don't know, Roy, or I don't know if that's really a question for Sharita. I mean, you could make it where you could hire a behavior interventionalist, a testing person, or AISs is what we call them, correct?
I guess my question...
That could be another option.
My question is, if we can't find the employee we're looking for, the best needs, could the school use this for better needs that they have at the time, based on their needs?
Yeah, I think we just put that in as an option for the principals. I don't even think that that'd require a board vote or anything like that. We just do that management-wise.
Great. That would be my suggestion.
So, that's an excellent observation. You know, I think handing that additional flexibility to management is always a good idea. You know, I think we're better, the less prescriptive that we are, because as you pointed out, the realities change. So, I think we're about ready to leave this agenda item. So...
Thank y'all for your patience and good discussion.
Let's see. Seven reports. We're now to 7B. The administration will provide a report on the cooperative purchasing fees paid by the district for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Bill Powell, if you are still in the employee of the district?
He was when the meeting started. I can tell you, Mr. Jackson, I know this, this is a written report. Are you going to do a presentation, Bill?
No, I was just, any questions?
Okay.
So, questions only. So, let me go to the right. Mr. Serabia, question?
Are we getting bananas at a good price?
Yes, we are.
All right, we're good.
The best price possible.
There you go.
Mr. Scanlon, Ms. Blackshear, Ms. Heineman? Report 7C. The administration will provide a written report of the School Health Advisory Council, known as Shaq, annual activities to the Board of Trustees. This is a written report, questions only. Let me start to the left, Mr. Scanlon.
Well, Roy's prepared to answer questions.
All right, Roy.
Well, my script says Thursday, questions only. So, is this for Monday?
Mine's Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson, President Jackson, I've read the activities. I do not have any questions about the activities described.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Blackshear? Ms. Heineman? Mr. Henry? Dr. Blasen game? Mr. Serabia? No questions. There will be a public hearing, which will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, June 18, 2022. We will now review the following consensus action item. Nine, action item consensus. 9A, the board will consider approving the minutes of the May 9, 2022, regular board meeting. I presume that we may, we can leave that on the consensus. To the left, it'll stay on consensus. Now, for non-consent items. The board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period of April 1, 2022 through June 30, 2022. Let me go to my right, Mr. Henry? Dr. Blasen game? Mr. Serabia? Mr. Scanlon? Ms. Blackshear? Ms. Heineman? May we move this to the consent agenda? Holly, if you would, please. 10B. The board will consider approving a resolution for the commitment of the district's fund balance. Mr. Scanlon? Ms. Blackshear? Ms. Heineman? Mr. Henry? Dr. Blasen game? Mr. Serabia? I do have a question for the viewing audience, because this is significant. Why do we have to do this, Karen?
Basically, our, one of the, another governmental accounting standard requires us to classify fund balance as non-spendable or committed or assigned or basically unassigned. And so, this commitment of fund balance requires a board resolution to say what you'd be committing fund balance for, and the different, and it's not where you're committing an amount, but you're committing to fund balance potential costs that would occur that you need to save money for. So, an example would be our self-funded insurance plans as well, which is like our workers' compensation and our other self-funded unemployment benefits, as well as committing portion towards our campus activity funds, the campus activity funds, because you're allowed to either bring that into the general fund or commit it for the campuses to utilize.
So, this resolution has financial statement impact?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. May we move this to consent agenda? Holly, if you would. 10C, this is set up for Monday. 10C, I'll read it. The board will consider the adoption of the 2022-2023 budget, including the 2022-2023 staff compensation plan. That is for Monday, so that stays on non-consent. Holly. 10D. The board will consider approving a list of qualified financial institutions, broker-dealers, investment pools, and investment advisors that are authorized to engage in investment transactions with the district. Questions only. Mr. Scanlon?
No, no questions.
Ms. Blackshear? Ms. Heineman? Mr. Henry? Dr. Blasen game? Mr. Serabia? So, I have one question, but also one comment. I will, this will have to be on non-consent, and the reason why is I will have to excuse myself from voting, because my investment in the equity position of one of the investment advisors listed on the page exceeds the dollar amount set forth by the state of Texas as a matter of law. I have a form here, and I will complete the form, and I will submit that form Monday at the board meeting. The question for you, Karen, is how do we come up with this list? Do we, as a board, tell you who to put on the list, or do you go out and independently find the people on this list?
We independently find the people on the list, and basically, what we do is, number one, we have firms that will reach out to us and say, I'd like to be included on your list. And so, we try to keep it at about eight, give or take, and the reason why is when we go out for bids for, like, if we're doing a particular agency that we're wanting to do to get quotes on, we have a turnaround time that is very short, literally like less than 30 minutes, where we have to make a decision and get back to them, because that's how long the price is good, and we have to be able to analyze and calculate it. So, if you have too many on the list, it's very hard to do that. And so, basically, we'll, we also look at how they have performed. And so, if they haven't performed, they might get removed from the list, and we would bring in one of those others that has asked to be part of the list.
Thank you for that clarification. And just for the, for the board, firms move off of this list, and sometimes they can move back on. Some that were very prominent, say, 15 years ago... Some that were very prominent, say 15 years ago, as they no longer could attract the talent, they went off the list. So thank you for identifying that performance is something that matters. May we keep that on consent agenda? No, this is on non-consent, I'm sorry. Ten E. The board will consider a resolution approving the district's investment policy and investment strategy, and the investment officers of the district, the independent source of instruction relating to investment responsibilities for the investment officers of the district, and investment training hours. Questions on the left? Miss Blackshear, Miss Heinemann to the right. Oddly enough, in a former life, I was a public funds investment officer. So normally, I would badger you with questions, but that won't happen tonight. The question I have for you is, have we identified who our investment officers are?
Yes, that's part, that is listed, and it is, it's our cash management person, as well as the CFO, as well as the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Financial Services.
And those names have been furnished to us in our, in our materials, correct?
Yes, yes, that is in there.
And is everybody current on their required training?
Yes. And that is something our auditors check and make sure we're in compliance.
And that training is as a matter of law.
Yes, eight hours.
May we put this on the, oh, there is one other question. For our investment strategy, what we will be adopting, have we repudiated high-risk investments?
Yes. In fact, the Public Funds Investment Act limits what we can invest in, and we tend to be a little more conservative than the Public Funds Investment Act.
Thank you. May we put this on consent agenda? Looking to my right, to my left, Holly, if you would. Okay. Ten F. The board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. That includes ten F one, EHBC local special programs, compensatory accelerated services, revise. Ten F two, EIE, local academic achievement, retention, and promotion, revise. Ten F three, FL, local student records, revise. This is for questions only. Looking to my right, any questions? To my left? There are no questions. May we move this to consent agenda? Looking to my left? Holly, this is moved to consent agenda. Ten G. The board will consider approving a request for a Texas Education Agency Low Attendance Day waiver for March 22, 2022, in response to the decline in the district attendance rate as a result of inclement weather. For the viewing audience, do we have explanatory material about this in the material furnished to the board?
We, we do, and just to let you know, we had, any time your attendance goes below a certain level, you're allowed to appeal that date to the state when it's related to like bad weather. So it actually restores some funding to us because of that.
Very good. That's merely a crossing, a T dotting of the I that I wanted to cover. Questions, comments, looking to my right? Seeing none, looking to my left? None. May we move this to consent agenda? Holly, if you would. Ten H. The board will consider approving the memorandum of understanding between Harris County Juvenile Board and Cypress Fairbanks ISD to participate in JJ AEP for the 2022-2023 school year. Questions to my left? Or to the right? May we move to consent? May we move to the consent? Before we move to consent, we have requested to have a tour of the JJ facilities. I would report to the board that the request has gone out, and we're just waiting to hear back from JJ. I would ask the forbearance of the board that we not go in the middle of summertime. It will be hot. They have plenty of concrete there. So perhaps, you know, September's not much cooler, but trust me, it'll be cooler than it is right now, so perhaps that would be the time. Holly, we can go ahead and move this to consent. Thank you. Ten I, the board to consider approving the memorandum of understanding with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, Texas A&amp;M University, and CFISD related to the advise, Texas College Advising Corps program. Questions to my left? Questions to my right? May we move to consent? Looking to the right, to the left? Holly, it's moved. Ten J. The board will consider approving the memorandum of understanding with Avance Houston, Inc. and Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District to collaborate as partner with Avance Houston's Healthy Relationships Building Futures Youth Programs. I would expect that Dr. Blasengame knows about this program. Let me look to the left, Mr. Henry, questions, comments? Dr. Blasengame? Mr. Sarabia, looking to the left? Questions? To the left, may we move to consent? And to the right? The board, the board will, ten K. The board will consider approving the 2022-2023 inter-local agreement with Harris County Resources for children and adults HCR, HRCA for the services of 19 youth service specialists. Questions for my colleagues on the right? On the left? May we move to consent? Holly, move to the consent. The board will consider approving the attached list of facilities for off-campus physical education, category one, for the 2022-2023 school year. Looking to my right, any questions? To my left? Seeing none, may we move to consent? Holly, it's moved to consent. Ten M. This one's serious and significant. The board will consider approving the list of advanced courses for exemption purposes for the 2022-2023 school year. Questions? On my left? Questions on my right? Dr. Mercedes, how do we come up with this list? I didn't wake you up, did I, Linda?
No.
You've had a long day.
I am wide awake, but I'm going to ask Dr. Bergman to come up and answer that question
So classes are identified as advanced by the State Board of Education, and they're listed on the TEA and UIL side by side. So that is where the initial list comes from. Under the provisions, districts may designate additional classes, provided this identification occurs before the semester in which the classes begin. So in Cyfair, we do identify some additional classes, our advanced-level classes, so our K-level, our Horizons GT classes, and our dual-credit classes that count as core credits towards graduation requirements. We include those on our list, and then we also include our advanced placement courses since they meet that criteria.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Bergman.
President Jackson, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking at the list of courses, and it's, I'm not seeing anything related to programming or computer science. Am I just not understanding one of the terms here?
We do have some computer science courses on there. We're actually adding a couple of them for this year. We have Computer Science I and Computer Science II that were already on the list. We're adding dual-credit.
Okay.
And we're adding those. They actually satisfy the LOT, the foreign language requirement for graduation, and so those are being added to the list. And then we're also adding, we've had Computer Science 3K and Computer Science Principles AP that are now being added, because those also meet the foreign language requirement.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't see it on the list, so thank you for answering that question. And as the only music geek on the board, it's fun to see the music theory there.
Well, it is nice. We do add all those AP courses, so that does include the music theory.
May we move this to consent agenda? Holly. Ten N. The board will consider approving the district's hazardous traffic conditions resolution as required by TEA to receive supplemental transportation funding. This is also a very important item, because it deals with safety for our children. Let me look to the left for questions? To the right?
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Henry.
By doing this, does this mean that the intersection will actually get an upgrade? Will Harris County actually do something about the intersection?
So I know the answer to that question, but let's go ahead and have Mr. Powell answer.
He's going to want overtime, Tom.
And how much are bananas again?
What this is, is basically just for us to receive supplemental funding, up to 10% of our reimbursement, our expenditures reimbursement for transportation funding. This just identifies the hazardous areas around every campus. Okay?
Thank you.
And Bill, if you would, why does it qualify for additional funding?
It qualifies because it makes transportation, well, we can provide transportation to those students that live in hazardous areas. Most districts across the state of Texas and nation still just use the two-mile area. So if you live more than two miles from your home campus, you get transportation in most school districts across the nation. In Cyfair, you can live across the street. If it's a hazardous area, or you walk to one of our bus stops, we'll, we'll give you a ride to school. And we want our kids on school, because the yellow school bus is the safest mode of transportation to and from school, according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration.
Very good. Thank you, sir. In terms of cutting costs, one thing that we did to cut back is we dropped it, and we went to the two-mile rule. And when revenue was restored, we went back to offering full service, because we wanted kids in seat. But it's always important to review what items were cut, and that was an excellent point when you brought that up, Mr. Henry. So may we move this to the consent agenda? And on Monday, of course, if we want to ask, how do we identify a hazardous traffic site, even if it's on the consent agenda, we certainly can at that point in time as well. Ten O. The board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. Ten O one, 2021 Alton Wilburn Elementary School reservations. Ten O two, 2022 Jarvis and Woods Spillane Road traffic signal. So for the ten Os, questions? Looking to my right, Mr. Henry? Gilbert? Matt and Roy's not here, so nobody to answer.
We got Jesse out there.
Okay.
Where's Jesse at?
We could still ask Bill. I mean, he's not.
So Mr. Scanlon?
No.
Miss Blackshear? Miss Heinemann? I have a question. Are we paying for a traffic signal, and if so, why?
Yes, sir. This traffic signal is going at the intersection of Woods Spillane and Jarvis, and the intent is to help us with traffic around New Transportation Six. And yes, it is my understanding that we are paying for this traffic signal.
And that's because we can't persuade the county to put it in a traffic signal?
We talk to the county frequently about helping out with traffic signals, and sometimes they do, most of the times they don't, but in this case, they are not.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
May we move this to the consent agenda? And to my left? Consent agenda? Ten P. Okay, this is where my vice president is going to go to town.
Ten P. The board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. Ten P one, appliance repair parts. Ten P two, art and miscellaneous school supplies. Ten P three, assorted fruit for nutrition services 2022. Ten P four, bananas for nutrition services. Ten P five, beverages for nutrition services. Ten P six, chicken and sausage products for nutrition services. Ten P seven, event staff contract labor. Ten P eight, excess workers' compensation renew policy. Ten P nine, farm-to-school produce for nutrition services. Ten P 10, fencing and wire mesh partitions. Ten P 11, fresh bread for nutrition services. Ten P 12, Google Workspace for Education Plus. Ten P 13, health services agency nurse. Ten P 14, ice cream for nutrition services. Ten P 15, milk and juice for nutrition services. Ten P 16, pizza and pepperoni for nutrition services. Ten P 17, processed produce for nutrition services. Ten P 18, school liability, privacy, and information security and automobile insurance renewal. Ten P 19, software license and maintenance renewal expansion. Ten P 20, structural pest control. Ten P 21, tomato products for nutrition services. Ten P 22, trays and assorted disposables for nutrition services. Ten P 23, trucks for nutrition services. Ten P 24, warehouse material handling equipment for nutrition services. Ten P 25, whole produce for nutrition services. Ten P 26, yogurt for nutrition services.
Thank you, Madam President. Any questions?
Thank you. Now I have a microphone. Any questions on these? To my right, Mr. Henry, Dr. Blasengame, Mr. Sarabia, bananas? To my left? Yes, Miss Blackshear.
Just to note, Mr. Jackson, my son is an executive with Jake's Finer Foods, which is listed on P three and P 22, so I will need to abstain from voting on that on Monday.
So we will have to move this to non-consent agenda. Other than that, questions to my left?
No questions, just one comment. So I just wanted to call out to Karen and technology team. On 10P2.12, the Google, yes, so the Google Workspace for Education Plus. So I appreciate the call out of four vendors submitting, so providing information regarding who submitted, you know, and the count of them, and that the committee reviewed, made a recommendation, selected the best value. So I just wanted to call out, thank you for that additional detail. No further questions.
Ten Q. The board will consider approving a resolution to join and participate in the following inter-local agreements and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to each inter-local agreement listed. Education Service Center, ESC, Region 13, Texas State Library and Archives Commission, the University of Oklahoma, and the University of Texas. Questions to my right? Questions to my left? No questions. A standard question. Are we in ESC Center 13? And if not, why are we doing business with 13 and not the local ESC?
Darren said you're still boss.
As Darren said, this is the most I've worked all month. We do business with Region Four, because we are in Region Four, but the service center out of 13 does have different contracts that we are hoping to do an interlocal agreement with, just based on their contracts and services that they provide as well.
Just to add to that.
Go ahead.
Mr. President and trustees, every service center, they have some specialized areas that they, like Region Four people contract from all over the state, with some services Region Four provide. We even, I think, do we still have a contract with Region Eight, which is up in northeast Texas? I don't know if we do, but it, but, so that's very common.
One example, like- One example, like, Region 4 provides all the braille equipment for most districts in Texas and across the nation.
Thank you, sir. And that was a point I wanted to make because it's, it's an anomaly, but each of the ESCs, they tend to specialize. And at some point in time, we'll, we'll have a tour of ESC number 4. I know perhaps only Dr. Blasengame and I have ever done a tour of it, but they are the leading provider of braille services for the entire state of Texas. So may we move this to consent? Holly, it's moved. 10R. This is set up for Monday, so I won't read it, but it will be on Monday. 10S. This is set up for Monday. So I won't read it unless the board requests me to do so. That brings us to 10T. The Board will consider a Level 4 appeal, gothier, of a Level 3 decision. This Level 4 hearing will be heard in closed session pursuant to Section 5.
I mean, Mr. Jackson, the grieving party is not here, is not presently in attendance, so I don't think we're authorized, because I want to go in closed session to hear it. If you give me a brief second, I want to go check briefly, just check outside the door yesterday. I think I saw them earlier, they walked out the door.
So, so if you would, please verify for us. Thank you, sir.
Just while we're waiting on him, I thought, you know, you see all those big costs for nutrition services, so I just, I just asked Bill, how many meals do we serve in a normal year? And he said, "In excess of 20 million." So we're literally the biggest restaurant around, so that's why the numbers are so big, is because we feed so many meals every year.
Mr. Sorabia, I think CFO Smith is smiling simply because we can't ask her any more questions. Yes, sir.
They are not, it appears they're no longer in the, in the building, so we basically, at this point, what's been our typical practice, you know, we've given, we gave the grieving party notice of the time and place of hearing, and our typical practice, when they no-show, is to, is that they essentially waive their right to appeal. And, and accordingly, you know, we don't, the board had, doesn't have to take any further action, and ultimately, the, and then the decision of Level 3 would be upheld. That being said, you know, because we are posted sufficiently, if we wanted to provide an opportu, if I, after consultant with Dr. Henry, and it was something administration wanted to pursue, we could offer another opportunity for them to appear and, and also have their agreements heard on Monday night, and then ultimately make the decision after that. But as I said earlier, our typical practice has been that by filling the appeal after being given notice, you've waived your right to, to have your, to have your Level 4 hearing appeal heard.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Dr. Henry, do you have a recommendation at this point in time for us?
I don't, I don't.
Excuse me. I don't at this time, but let me do a little research on it, and, I mean, it's already on the agenda, so we, we'll be fine Monday if we decide to bring it to you.
That sounds reasonable to me, but this is also something that I need a consensus view from the, the board. So we will wait and hear from management on Monday, and then we will consider the recommendation from management on how to proceed. Okay. The superintendent's briefing will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, June 13, 2022. And I think now I can say that we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and board members, this was a little bit painful, but thank you for your time and attention on the budget.